Going to start the script. For remotely conducted open meetings, first, I actually want to apologize because for anybody who's listening, I don't have a second screen to be able to run this off of, so I am running it off my phone, so it's going to look a little bit different, and I apologize for that, but we will make it work. So, as a preliminary matter, this is Justine St. John, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Here.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am here as well. Staff, Greg Johnson?
Yes.
Baggins DeMuto? Excellent, and I do see others on as well that we will... All right, so, and I do get some feedback, I'm not sure what that's... So, good evening. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Zoom, video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. So, please note for this meeting, that this meeting is being recorded, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you may broadcast may be captured by the recording. For Board Docs supported meetings, which is what we have, all the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on Board Docs, and we recommend the members and the public follow along the agenda as posted on Board Docs, unless the Chair notes otherwise. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name. To provide any comment, questions, or motions, please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking, and please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields a floor to you and state your name before speaking. If the members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And once the Chair has listed all the public commentators, I will call each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So there. So, moving on, do I have any public comments at this time? And seeing none? Really quick, I just wanted to, before we go any further...
I do.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, it's Brian Sanders, 172 Summer Street.
Hi, Brian.
How's it going? I was wondering, when is the Town Administrator Review going to be done?
Oh, so, you mean his evaluation?
Correct.
Actually, I just emailed him yesterday, proposing to put that on the agenda for the 18th, and we will be handing it out to the members, and then from there, I think I'm going to give everybody about a month to get it back to us.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else have anything? Okay. So, again, really quick, two things. For some reason, our meetings have been going really long. So, about 8:30, I think if we're still pretty far down in the agenda, I think if we're not close to adjourning, I'm going to propose a five to 10, probably a five-minute break, just to walk away from the computer for a second and come back. So, just FYI, that might happen. The other thing that I would like to do, and I'm hoping the Board will agree with this, is I would like to change a couple items on the agenda. I would like to move the police appointment to after item six, which is the consent agenda. And I would also like to move the alcohol licenses to after the police agenda. So, we'll go consent agenda, Maynard Police, and then alcohol licenses, and then we will get into the special town meeting discussions. Does everybody feel okay with that? I figure that that way, we can get some of the other business taken care of before we start the discussions.
Works for me.
Excellent. All righty then. So, next item on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes. Move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of July 21, 2020, as shown, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved. Do I have a second? Thanks, Chris. And do we have any discussion regarding that? All right. So, voting, Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Perfect. We're going to move into correspondences. And we are going to move to accept and approve correspondences A through D, as shown. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Thanks, Jeff. Do I have any comments regarding this? Anything at all? Nope. All right, I wanted to, I personally want to thank Hannah Canary, who was the recipient of the Board of Selectmen Scholarship for her thank you note. I wish her luck. Class of 2020 continues to be an interesting class, but I think that they'll get there eventually. So, all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Excellent. Consent agenda number six, we only have one. And the motion to approve the one consent agenda item, which is A, as shown, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David.
I got a quick question, if I may, just for Greg. Just curious as to what the provision would be, should the Governor pull back the standards that we have? You know, there's now talk that they may pull back and go to, go back to stage two, or whatever stage we're at now, I don't know. That might affect these, this, and others that currently have approval. Are they this, based on the language we've got, I'm assuming they're null and void, and they would be notified in some fashion?
Yeah, but does that have anything to do with outdoors, David?
Hmm?
Is that anything to do with outdoors? Because I thought it was just more of indoors.
I thought that it had to do with gatherings that caused an issue. That's why they couldn't get together before. Maybe it's just the numbers that would change from now 100 down to 25, I don't know, but I thought that it might affect something like this.
So, if it does, yes, the Governor's stated emergency order, like, supersedes any local authority to that degree, and, and, yes. And even if it didn't, I would have recommended probably to adjust this, to amend this permit, or even to revoke it, if need be the case, just to abide by it. But in this case, I think Mr. Brisby would probably...
He's socially responsible, he's not going to violate it, just to make sure that there's no issues.
No, I don't think it'd be an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing I was concerned about is the way the consent agenda was stated. You had Elliot Brisby behind tennis courts, so he has nothing to do with the tennis courts.
That's right.
Something to do with Coolidge, not tennis courts.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion. It's...
Just so everybody knows, I'm having a power dimming situation here, we don't know what might happen, so if I go off, I didn't, it's not because I don't like anybody, it's because the power went off.
You can join me down here, I'll...
There you go. You have room, there's plenty of room.
We'll have social distancing.
All right. Anyone else have any questions about the consent agenda item for Coolidge Park? All right. Vote to approve, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right. So, now we are going to move on to item number nine, which is the Maynard Police Department. And, hold on one second. And so, this is going to be the motion to accept and appoint Joseph Gennaro, I hope I said that right?
Yeah.
Excellent. Sorry about that. To the Maynard Police Department as a patrolman, with the effective start date of August 10, 2020. Do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Chief, you want to give us some background?
Sure. Joe was one of 49 select people that sent in their resumes, and we decided to interview eight. And Joe was very articulate, and he had been working as a part-time officer in Dunstable for the last two years. Those two years, he then went to the Full Time Academy, and Dunstable was going to put him on, but he, due to COVID, due to budget cuts, they never decided to put on a full-time officer, so he was kind of left hanging, but he had the Full Time Academy, which, to our benefit, you know, he's already trained, and he can start right away. He has a bachelor's degree from Framingham State, and several trainings that he's already had, so we won't have to do that. So, he was very good in the interview that Justine sat in on, and, you know, he'll be a great addition to the department.
Excellent. Does anybody have any questions? For either the Chief or Joe? No? Excellent. Yeah, so, as the Chief alluded to, I was actually in on the interview as well, so I've already met him and was very impressed by his interview. So, I think that we're getting another good officer to add to our team. So, with that being said, sorry, I just lost it on my phone. The motion to accept and appoint, I, David?
Yes.
Excellent. Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So, congratulations, welcome to the department.
Very, I didn't realize you were on. Hi, Jeff.
How are you?
Congrats, Joe.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
One more thing, too, is, you know, just like usually we would do this at the ceremony, and everybody agreed, whenever it sends, even, he might be a five-year veteran then, but we'll have some kind of ceremony for all of this.
I was going to say, you're keeping a list, right?
Yeah. It's going to be a group photo.
After next month, it'll be eight. Between promotions, everything, you know, new hires, and everything will be eight.
You're building a nice, nice team there.
We'll just have a department.
Exactly. All right, well, welcome to the department.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, have a good night. All right. Moving on to, my apologies, moving on to item 9B for the police department. Is a motion to approve a moratorium on solicitor's permits to commence immediately and end upon the conclusion of the current state of emergency issued by Governor Baker due to the COVID-19 outbreak. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Excellent. Chief? Oops, sorry.
Yeah, you know, normally, we would get anywhere from 25 to 40 applications for solicitor permits. They cause complaints anyways, but with everything current, going door-to-door for people that, you know, haven't asked for anybody to come door-to-door, they're touching their door handle, they're touching their doorbell, this, and with the influx, I just don't see it as a very prudent idea to do it. Again, it didn't come up because nobody had applied, for one. Somebody has asked about what the process would be, and that's why I submitted this to the Board, because I just don't see it being a good idea to do this with the current state affairs. You don't know whose door you're knocking on, it could be a high-risk person that answers the door. They don't know to answer the door, you know, some people might not be wearing a mask when they answer the door. They, it may be open already, you know, so I just don't think it's a good idea. There's other means that people can do this, they can do calling and bulk mail to get their situation done, so.
Hey, Chief, does that include the census?
No. Census doesn't fall under solicitors.
Got you.
It's a matter of selling. And I had, was talking with somebody about this, and the census does not, it's a requirement, you're required to fill out the census, so you fill it out, they won't come to your house. So, there's one way to get people not to come to your house, and if you fill out the fact.
I've never heard of that before, if you don't do your census, they actually...
They come to your house, yeah.
They come to your house, yeah.
That must be what my son is talking about.
Yeah. It's, we, they give us the, usually, the courtesy of giving us a list of the people that'll be out checking for the census and that, but they don't fall under solicitors, and because it's a requirement, they can go door-to-door, because they're not selling anything either. So, it falls under state and federal law that they were allowed to do that. Now, if you tell them to get lost, they can't stay. That's, that's the one thing that they've gotten in trouble, because people have said, like, I don't want to fill it out, you know, they can't stay on your property.
Have you had any, and this is off topic, but have you had any recent complaints about census people? I thought I saw something on social media.
Yeah. Yeah, there was, there was one that the person walked into the house, it was a misunderstanding, they thought they were walking into one of those, like, porches, or whatever, they didn't realize, when they stepped in, they were stepping into the house, the person told them to get out, and it was that, but it was, it was a misunderstanding on the way the house was set up. They thought they were stepping in to a vestibule or little foyer. It wasn't, it was actually in the house. And it scared the person, is more what happened.
Anybody else have any other questions for the Chief regarding this? All right, then, we will, the motion to approve the moratorium, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Excellent. So, now, we're going to skip again to number 11, which is alcohol licenses. And, okay, hold on. Technology is not my friend tonight. Stand by. So, the first one is going to be move to approve, move to accept and approve, corns, sorry. I apologize. All right. Every time I try to make it bigger, it goes away, so I'm sorry. Would someone else...
What number are you moving to, Justine? Just...
11, 11A?
11A, please.
Make a motion to approve the temporarily revisited, I'm sorry, revised alcohol licenses of establishments granted outdoor expansion of premises, including Amory's Tomb Brewing Company, 76 Main Street, Azekar Tapas Bar Company, 51 Main Street, Awipal, 51R Main Street, GG Restaurant, 177 Main Street, Maynard Lodge of Elks, 34 Powder Mill Road, Pleasant Cafe, 32 to 36 Main Street, and authorization of digital signatures if approved.
Excellent.
I second that.
Excellent. Any discussion?
What?
I can clarify what this is, if you would, if you would want.
Yes, absolutely, sir.
Yes.
So, the Board already approved the actual expansions of the establishments, but we have to now follow up with the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission with, you know, kind of reflecting that on the actual license. And so, as you can see, the licenses are below, and so, you know, as we wrote the license, it's, there is an expiration on this temporary expansion. And so, we wrote, the license expires November 1, 2020, because, again, this isn't the actual license, this is just that, like, interim license, unless suit or suspended, cancels, or revoked pursuant to, pursuant to the order.
Flashing on and off. Oh, sorry.
So, and then at the end of the license paragraph, it says, upon... Upon expiration of this license, the pre-existing license and the terms shall apply. So, just goes back to the, what they had before.
Excellent. Does anybody have any questions about it? Essentially, we've already approved it, it's just a matter of making sure the ABCC knows that we've approved it.
Yeah, that's right.
All right. So, then, motion to approve, David?
Yes.
Chris? Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so thank you. Next, we're going to go to, I think I've got it here, 11B. Move to approve the change in operational hours by the Maynard Elks to Thursday and Friday, 4 to 10, and Saturday and Sunday, from 3 to 10. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Greg?
Well, Flo might actually be on the line, but this is...
She is, I see her.
This is just a change in hours. Flo, do you want to explain why you want to change your hours?
We're just looking to be able to extend it a little bit later, if there is a game on, rather than booting everybody out. We haven't come into that situation, because there haven't been any games on. But we were looking forward to getting busier and maybe doing more hours, so we just didn't know if we were restricted to the timeframes that we gave you, or if we could expand to our regular hours.
Now, so, your regular hours, I'm sorry, but your regular hours are until 10 typically, or are they till...
No, our regular hours are even beyond that. So, when I originally had written it, and then I put, you know, going forward, would we have to change this every time we needed it?
Okay.
Go to the full extent and only use what we need.
So, and this is for the outdoor seating, as opposed to indoor, or is this for both?
This is more for the indoor than it is the outdoor. I mean, if it's, if we're only pertaining outdoor, then I'm not asking any questions for indoor, I guess. I don't, I'm not sure where I, where I stood on it.
Greg or Becky, I do have a question about that, because if it's indoor, doesn't her license apply the way it is anyway, so she can stay open whenever? You're muted, Becky.
That's a good point, so I didn't, I think, I'm glad you're clarifying. So, we would have to look at what their license says, and then exactly what, I mean, what you just approved. So, let me actually bring it up for the Maynard Elks, let me see what you just approved.
We didn't approve anything yet.
No, you just approved the revised license.
Oh, into the ABC.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
But Greg, this is basically for the outdoor revision, not the indoor.
That's, that's right, because you, because you just approved the... ...outdoor dining areas.
So, indoor has no effect on the time.
So, technically, yeah, you don't, you don't need to change for your indoor hours, is that...
Okay.
Well, however, the only thing is, right now, bars themselves are not open, so as long as it's an eating establishment, it works.
Correct.
Okay, so, that's, that's the difference. And I think the reason the 10 o'clock, to extend to 10 o'clock, is the outside, because I think everybody else that we've extended the outdoor seating to, the latest that we've let that go is until 10 o'clock. So, that's probably why, for that reason.
Okay.
Is that... Do you have any other questions?
No, I'll go for the 10 o'clock and leave the indoor where it is, and then we'll be fine.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for Flo? All right. Then, the motion to approve the change in operational hours. So, Becky, then, we'll have to obviously update the thing for the ABCC that we just did, sorry about that. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And then, we're on to item 11C. Move to approve the retail packaged goods store for all alcohol licensed for Maynard Wine and Spirits Incorporated at 9 Digital Way, and authorize the digital signatures if approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Greg?
This is, this is pretty much one of the final steps of, you, if you recall, the gentleman came in to talk about the transition, the transfer of the license from, well, it used to be, I think it used to be next to John's Cleaners, and then, now, it's down next to the Market Basket. And, so, you know, and there was the discussion about a little floor layout, and I said, this is sort of the conclusion of that transfer, and it's, and it's the actual license.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions for either Greg or Becky regarding it? All right. Oh, go ahead.
Mike, it's not a question, but it's coming. I thought, so I thought we had already approved this license.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I thought you approved the transfer.
The transfer?
Yep. Did I know, did you hear that, Chris? Did you hear it?
No, I didn't hear.
Say it again, Becky.
You approved the application and the transfer from, from Maynard Marais?
Yeah.
The Maynard Wine and Spirits. And then, once we got the license approval back from the ABCC, now, we're just approving the actual license. And I'll hold the license here until they get the occupancy from the building inspector and the fire chief.
Okay.
It's bureaucracy, Chris.
Well, I just, I just thought we, I thought we were all set with this one, that's all.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you, Becky.
All right. Oh, you muted yourself.
I got a quick question. Couple things. First off, again, if the lights go out, I'll call in, that's what my alternate plan is, because they're flapping. Greg, there's going to be a planning board hearing relative to some of the issues down on Parker Street, relative to them owing money to, you know, we'll get into the whole detail or whatever.
Yeah, sure.
Let's say, for example, that they, they, they stop all, all building and everything else, and pull the permits.
Right.
So, these people never get an occupancy permit.
Right.
How long does this license get to sit in Becky's office without giving somebody else an opportunity to grab at it? Is there a deadline that, and, you know, this is additional, sort of additional leverage, if you want to call it that, it really probably isn't, but additional leverage on the Parker Street development to make sure that they don't lose that license?
I don't know. Becky, does it sunset? Do we have, like, a, does the license sunset?
I don't think so.
Yeah, it does. There is, there is part of the town's rules and regulations, but particular licenses that we were granted from the state are a special for economic development. So, there's six full liquor licenses that are available for 129 Parker Street, so it's one of the specials, but we still have regular licenses available at this time, so...
But if there's, if there's a, that's, that's all true, but if there is, I think what David was asking, correct me if I'm wrong, David, but I believe it's the use of the actual license. So, if someone just can't sit on the commodity, and I'm sure it would be perfectly happy to get their annual fee, but it doesn't, it doesn't really do anyone much good beyond that if they just sit on the commodity. So, how, so is there, I think there is, because, but I, but clarify, Becky, or we'll get back to you, David.
Just get back to me, just get back to me, I, no big deal.
Board of Selectmen's rules and regulations, and it's also in the ABCC's rules and regulations.
Remember, off the top of your head, with that time, like, how long? Like, how long do they, can they sit on it without using it?
They call it like a pocket license, and I don't remember the time.
We'll look it up. We'll look it up.
I was, I think ours was, wasn't it six months?
Yeah, because we'd have to send a letter. So, if I don't hear from somebody shortly.
I just, I thought, I, I, I thought the, I thought the intent of that, because of the last couple of times that it's come up, that the intent of that was to keep people that aren't doing anything
Right.
From just holding one until someone tries to buy one from them. They get a high post type of thing. I thought that was kind of what the intent of that. I can't speak for the ABCC, but our own rule was just for that reason, because we did have a few people, oh, they closed. But I guess sit on it, see what I can do with it, and, you know, but then we didn't have the six then, or the extras, so.
Yeah, it's probably moot, it's probably moot in the long run, but just looking for leverage.
Six months sounds right, but we'll definitely, we'll, we'll double check.
All right, sounds good. Anybody else? No? I do want to say how impressed I was that David said planning board, and Bill Nemser appeared on my screen. So, that
I know, right? It was automatic.
All right. Motion to approve. David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Arment?
Yes.
Chris?
Oops, there he is.
Chris?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you. And I am a yes as well. So, thank you very much. All right. So, now we are going to go back and revisit the item number seven on the agenda, which is the special town meeting for October 5th of 2020. And you want me to read all of these motions, don't you, Greg?
Yes, please.
Okay, fine. All right. So, I'm going to move to refer
Justine, before, before you move on, do you think it might be worthwhile to do number eight, which is really quick stuff? So, that then, I don't know if Michelle is on just for this, but but that way we can sort of move that out of here, the elections issue, and, and then move on.
Absolutely. I agree. No problem at all. So, let's go back to item eight, elections. And I move to approve the request from the town clerk of the town of Maynard that the location of precincts one and four polling place be continued to be temporarily relocated from the Maynard Public Library at 77 Nathan Street to the Fowler School at 3 Tiger Drive for the remainder of 2020. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Greg?
We just wanted to follow up the, the same procedures that we just did for the local election.
Yeah, that worked out really well.
Yeah, very well.
Excellent. Does anybody have any questions or comments, concerns regarding it? No? All right. So, the motion to approve. Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Arment?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So, that works. Perfect. And then, the second is move to approve the warrant for the state primary dated September 1st, 2020, as provided. Do I have a second?
Second, if we can also add to permit use of stamps.
With
Use of signature? Yeah, yeah.
Yes, authorize the use of digital signature if approved. All right. So, David's second. Any other comments regarding this? Questions? No? All right. Then the motion to approve. Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Arment?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So, thank you, Michelle. I see that you're on. Thank you very much. And I will go back to the special town meeting. Item number seven. Move to refer the following proposed draft articles back to the planning board for zoning bylaw amendments. Draft Control C, zoning bylaw amendment, amend section nine, do I have to, I spell all of it out, right, Greg?
In case someone, yes, you
No worries, no worries, sorry. Amend section 9.4.10 to 9.4.9. Draft Control H, zoning bylaw amendment, definition of a for-profit institution. Draft Control O, water supply protection district map. Draft Control HH, which is zoning bylaw amendment, section two, open space. And I'll just do all of them all together. And then
Or you could, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but you could just do those if you It's up to you. I just, I'm just saying, you don't have to do it as it's written. Like, you could do, you could do that pocket, and then you could do the rest, or you could do one at a time. But it's however you want to do.
All right. I'll read all of them, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
So, and then I also move to accept and approve and forward to the finance committee for recommendations and comments. Draft Control A, which is town report acceptance. Draft Control D, acceptance of keen av. Request a recommendation from the planning board. Draft Control F, amend the town general fund budget fiscal year 2021. Draft Control G, transfer from stabilization for FY 21, 2021 budget revenue shortfall. Draft Control N, home rule petitions, special legislation concerning liquor license. Draft Control MM, taking for the bridge construction. Draft Control RR, leasing authorization through the general fund appropriation for public works capital. Draft Control J, which is discontinuance of a portion of a public way at Third Street. Draft Controlled K, disposition of real property, discontinued portion of Third Street. Draft Control Q, transfer from capital stabilization. Draft Control E, authorizing, authorizing to borrow for the construction of the fire station. Draft Control XX, which is transfer from vet general stabilization for a feasibility study pertaining to Green Meadow School. And Draft Control M is a capital outlet expenditure exclusion for the partial funding of a feasibility study pertaining to the Green Meadow School. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, do we want to have some discussion on this?
Could you, Greg, just give me an update on the processes? These will go to either the planning board or the FinCon. Do they come back to us? Or is this our final control point on this?
You're muted.
I heard him.
No, Greg.
No, Greg was muted.
You think I'd be better at this? Um, I, you know what I'm trying, I'm having a little bit of a hiccup. I, I was gonna say, I believe the planning board articles do come back to the, to the selectmen, because you have to approve the final warrant anyways. And I believe that
They're nodding their heads, yes.
And Bill's, Bill's, all right, so I was, I was right.
Was your question about the other ones?
My question was about both, so that answers
So, for the finance committee, no, it doesn't come back, only in that eventually you'll see them anyways for the approval of the final warrant. But it, but it doesn't, it doesn't come back to the selectmen for like a formal sort of re-acceptance, so to speak. But we'll send all of these to the, to the finance committee, you know, per the, per the requirement of town charter anyways, for their review and their own sponsor, for the finance committee recommendation and comments.
So, this is our opportunity to debate whether or not we like the wisdom of moving forward with these articles on the warrant.
That's correct. So, as a reminder for the timeline, the time is upon us. So, the, the 18th is when we had penciled in for the approval of the warrants, which I understand is right around the corner.
No.
No, it's not?
No, you approved the warrant on Wednesday, September 2nd.
What's on the 18th, then?
The 18th, like, today, today is the day for your draft articles. The August 20 4th is the citizens petition day.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why they could if we get another article, a citizens petition, the end of August.
That's true.
Oh, do we have one already?
No, we don't, but we have to put
If there's an additional article, then the board would have to
And it's actually August 21st, so I want to correct that.
So, we had a, I always thought we had a second over on with all the facts, because we didn't always have them the first time. Placeholders and all that, so.
We don't have enough time this time. Our timeline's so tight.
Well, as Justine suggested, if we did another meeting next week, because we would, whatever, we talked about the very beginning of the meeting, it might make sense to, if we, if anyone has any real questions on these, because I don't know, I, I know, I wasn't really prepared to go through them at that level of detail, because I thought we still had another bite at the apple with these. But if we don't, if we're going to meet next Tuesday anyway, maybe that would be a good time to kind of go through some, because certainly some of these, some of these require some questions and some answers before we approve.
Yeah, I, I think we need time for us to have a discussion in regards to some of these items. I, I agree, and I think that it's also a good opportunity to inform, especially on the, the major ones, to inform the public more clearly that this is going to be discussed and in detail, and whether or not it will go onto the warrant at the next meeting. And that way, we can sort of get the word out. Some of them, I think, are, some of them are really routine. We can, we can approve them without a problem with the, and we can have a discussion tonight to sort of hear where people's minds are at, certainly. That's my thought.
So, my first question is, now that I told Greg that I was going to read them all together at once as one motion, do we want to, where the planning board will give it, the other ones back to us after they've looked at them? Do we just want to approve those right now, take them off the table, and then focus on the other ones that are going to be going to the finance committee? And then we can have more of a discussion now, and then move, and get our questions answered, and move into possibly having that meeting next week to finish our discussions and finalize whether or not we're going to put it on the warrant. Does that make sense?
Going to the first four of the planning board ones?
Yes.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
That makes sense to me.
All right. So, then I'm going to re-amend or amend the motion, and we're just going to refer the following draft articles back to the planning board for zoning bylaw amendments. Do I have to read it all over again, Greg?
No, just say which draft controls, like
All right. So, Draft Control C, Draft Control H, Draft Control O, and What?
Second one, H. I'd like to talk about that one a little, a little more.
Okay, Ken, let me second it first. Draft Control O and Draft Control HH. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Okay, go ahead, Chris.
I'd just like to, I'd like to talk about the definition of the for-profit educational institute a little bit before we send it back to whoever.
Okay. Bill?
Yes, Chris?
We can do it next week when we do have the other discussion. Do it now. I don't, I don't care.
Well, the planning board will be hearing this next week, I believe, at their meeting on the 28th.
I, I just think to Chris's point, he wants to clarification in regards to, because we're talking really about, you know, the Beijing Royal School, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that's what's coming down. I mean, is this kind of, this zoning bylaw change, is that, that we are considering making it a for-profit? Or is that what you're asking, Chris?
Well, yeah, well, I'm kind of curious that there's this definition. Further, my curiosity is more along the lines of what, what does it mean to the town? And what does it potentially mean to the relationship to the town, between the town and the Beijing Royal School, if this goes through? That's kind of my, well, that's the question, is what, you know, what does this do for or against, you know, for the town, against the town type of thing? What does it do to the relationship between the town and the school potentially?
So, I, I can, I can do a quick summary, which is because we don't right now have a definition of a for-profit institution in our zoning bylaws, we need to have one, because we're saying the Beijing Royal School. But for those of people in the public who are unfamiliar, the Beijing Royal School is just what we've been referencing, because that school is actually in Beijing, China. But the Fazang Group, I may not say, saying that right, but the Fazang Group, who are the developers and the owners of the Beijing Royal School, and a couple of other academic and hospitals in China, they have purchased 111 Powdermill Road, which is the old Stratus Building, and they want to make it into a, a like a grade school all the way through high school education institute. But they are, I'll be frank, I think it's unlikely that they'd be able to meet the requirements to be classified as a nonprofit academic institution. But they already bought the land, and they're already going through renovations of the building. So, but our zonings don't allow for a for-profit right now, because we want to have a clear definition. So, they wouldn't be able to open, because they can't, because they can't qualify as nonprofit without this. So, so in other words, this, how does this affect our relationship? This is a good thing, because it means that we are, we will, we will be able to legally allow for them to, to be a for-profit institution at that site. They know that they're the ones that are having to go through the application with DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, to be classified as nonprofit. And my understanding is, again, is that they're, they probably won't make the criteria to be nonprofit. So, this, this actually, in the end, it may have been the same results for the town, whether they are nonprofit or for-profit, because we would, if they were nonprofit, then we would set up a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, a pilot agreement.
Pilot, yeah.
So, we wouldn't get taxes from them, but, but just like any other academic institution, we would, we would sort of set up an agreement of what they would pay for us that would ideally be comparable to taxes. And then, but if it's for-profit, that just streamlines the process, because then they just pay taxes like any other, you know, private, commercial, industrial institution.
So, basically, what you're saying is by us changing the zoning bylaw to make sure that that is for-profit, then that means they, there's no way there's, they're going to be, you know, qualified as nonprofit.
No, they could still be, because that's up to the state. But, but because the, because in case they are not able to be nonprofit, and they, and they still want to renovate and make a school there, we have to have a definition for, for profit.
And I think it's important, too, from a sort of a future look, planning situation. Who's to say that the Beijing School's the only place, the only school that's ever going to want to come to Maynard? I've heard a lot of talk from people saying, wouldn't it be great if part of the mill became like a branch of some type of educational institution? You know, that type of thing. I think in, by at least having it in the bylaws, we are, or the plant, the zoning bylaws, it, it allows us some flexibility to even invite certain, certain organizations to, to come in. Whereas before, we would have had to say, I don't know, I guess that's what Bill does. You know, I don't know if it fits. I don't know if we have a zoning area for you. And then I presume also, Bill, and you can answer this, that it would allow the planning board to sort of establish the zones within which such a business or for-profit educational institution could exist.
Well, the, the whole idea of this, and Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, but the original use table was already changed.
Correct, at the last town meeting.
Right, and
This is Bill Nemser, town planner, and Kate
Hi, guys.
Um, yes. So, what we're doing here is clarifying what a for-profit is for the definition. That was, that was something that was requested or suggested by the attorney general last, after the last review of the town meeting. Now, the, the key thing here is that it gives us a special permit, you know, this, it allows us to permit a for-profit school by special permit. And that, that gives us a little more flexibility.
Control.
Yeah, yeah. So, that, but, but basically, this one, all you're doing is just the definition.
So, it's really, it's really a technicality, then, this is.
Yeah, yeah. This is not the most exciting warrant I've, articles we've given you, but they're, so, yes, that's correct, David.
All right. Chris, do you want to hold that one out, or are you?
I'm excellent. No, the explanation was excellent. All my questions have all been answered. Thank you.
Excellent. Anybody else have any questions regarding just those four draft articles that might, that just disappeared off my thing? To refer to the planning board? All right. So, then let's vote on that, to refer those. Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Arment?
Yes.
And I am a yes also. So, thank you very much. Planning to approve. All right. So, moving back to the second part of the articles for review. So, there are obviously lots of them. And does somebody want to start off with, I'm sure that the, the ones that probably people want to talk about are the, are the money type articles? Or does somebody want to start a conversation? You're muted, David.
Yeah, how about if we, if each of us takes a shot at saying, we want to pull one of these out? For example, I have, I don't think anybody would have a problem with A going forward, the town report. You know, that's not going to be one that we want to discuss. But if any one of us has a problem with any one of the A through M, just speak up, and then the others, we approve, and then we go from there.
Okay.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah. So, that sounds, so it sounds like if, if there's something that you don't feel is going to be contentious, then you would
Or if you, or reverse, if you want to pull something, speak out and say, I want to pull that. The other ones are going. So, for example, I would say the town report, I don't have a problem with the acceptance of the keen av, unless people want to hear the description, because that's, you know, that's always important. I don't have a problem with N, the home rule petition. I don't have a problem with the MM. I'm looking down. I'm looking down. The Third Street one, I think, could at least be discussed, but I'm okay with it. And the other ones, I think, need a discussion. But, so the ones that I noted, I'm okay with just moving forward without any discussion. But I don't know if, but if the others want to have a discussion, I'm all for it too.
But I definitely want to have a discussion in regards to the feasibility study for Green Meadow.
Yeah, so that's one of you would, that's one I think that you would, we would pull out regardless, so yes.
Okay, so right now I have, so if we want to look at discussing first, the quote-unquote easy ones. Article, draft control A, D, N, or MM. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, or anything about those four articles? Those moved over to the finance committee? So why don't we, actually, I'll just, I'll just keep a note of it, that's fine. So then from there, we'll move on to RR, which is leasing of the, the lawnmower. Does anybody have any questions, concerns?
How old is our current mower? I don't know if Dustin's on the line.
I think this one, Jeff, I think this is for specifically, if I remember correctly, because we needed something for the, the new field over at Fowler.
That's correct.
Because the mower that we have now is insufficient to properly mow that grass to keep it healthy as time goes on. I see Justin's on, so he can.
But that's, that's what it says in the sponsor comments too. It says the lease of the, this is this type of Toro Ground Master 4,000D. With an 11-foot cut width is an upgrade for the current Hustler motor with a five-foot cut. So we're, we're upgrading our, we'll do it in twice a time.
Yeah, and that was strictly to the soccer fields, basically.
Yeah, and I think it keeps the grass healthier and all this of this. It's like a sports mower is how they referred to it when we had that discussion.
That's fine. The other thing I wanted to mention about the mower though is, is we're about to accept at least financial policies. And normally under these policies, wouldn't this come out of the capital budget?
It would, yes.
Are we, are we just saying we're not quite to where we want to be with those financial policies? So this is one of the last times that we'll take this sort of funding from an operational budget instead?
We haven't even elected proof policies yet, have we?
They're later on, they're later on the agenda for a reason.
Well, I understand.
Hey, so let me, let me clarify a couple things, so.
I'm joking, Jeff.
What Chris said is correct, like they are not yet even finalized. But even if they were, they're not a bylaw or, or a town charter. So we don't have to abide by those policies. It is a guidance, mostly for me and my staff, and execution of the charter and bylaws regulations as to when certain things have to be submitted and whatnot. So what is in the charter is a capital improvement plan that has to be provided by the capital planning committee, which right now only has two members. So even if we, so, so there is no, so there's no formality to it. So like, there's no, there's nothing, there's not, there's no process to do for this particular item. But your point is, is fair, that, that in, in ideally, in the course of a regular budget cycle, this would be considered a capital item that would then be, you know, a capital item request would be submitted by the department, in this case DPW, for the capital planning committee to consider and then evaluate according to its set criteria. And then it provides a priority and funding scheme. But, but we don't have those processes in place. We don't have, we don't have the body to deliberate that. So this, anyway, so I, I want to say yes and no. We're, we're not abiding by the, by the concept, which I think is fair. And I look forward to, to having that whole process I just described happen. But right now, we don't have, there's, there's nothing to abide by.
And if I may, I agree, I agree with Jeff's comment. But in this particular instance, there was a whole discussion, probably now six months ago, I guess it was, when we were at the, we were in the room Justine's in. And the recreation committee was, had this lengthy discussion about, you know, the investment that we as a community just put into the Fowler field. And the fact that the Fowler field was not going to be able to be maintained properly for any number of reasons. One of which was the way that the cutting was done. So I think for many reasons, it's, this is a fiscally prudent, even though I agree it's a capital item and not necessarily should be coming out where it is. But it's fiscally prudent in order to preserve the investment that we made on that property. And again, Justin, Justin's online and I'd like for his comment to confirm all of that so that.
That, that I understand. I'm prepared to prove tonight. I'm just saying in, in relatively short period of time, I would assume in two years, when a similar item comes up, it would come from the capital.
I would hope, I would hope so.
Not from the operating department.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jeff, I can just add one more thing. This is Justin DiMarco. Just, you guys have hit all the points. I know you weren't involved with the tri-board process that David and Justine are kind of alluding to with the rec department and the rec commission and the BOS. Just for peace of mind in regards to capital, this is a lease-to-own process. So even if we get to the next year and we decide to, where our focus for, is for a three-year lease, and we decide to eliminate the lease, we can just do a payoff and then start the capital process at that point. If our policies line up and then we can start fresh if you had to. So realistically, rates are at all-time lows. So this is really just a very easy pain to process for us.
That's fine. My, my point was less about this specific piece of equipment rather than making sure we're aligned to the policies we're going to be talking about later in this very meeting.
Yeah.
And then, okay.
All right, so does anybody have other, have, anyone else have any questions on RR? Before I move forward? Anybody have any objections to us moving that to the list of ones that we will accept to, forward to town, to FinCom? Okay, got it, so that one's been moved. All right, so then we have the discontinuance of Third Street, draft control J. Greg?
So J and K are related, but I'll start with J. So it's, it's a lot easier to explain if you're looking at a map of it, but I'll do the best I can. Like I tried last night at the budget subcommittee. So Third Street intersects with Fifth Street. And on the map, it looks, I don't know, I'm holding my hands up like anyone can see. But on the, on the map, it looks like Third Street continues past Fifth Street, but it does not. So if you were to drive over to Fifth Street and Third Street, you would see that, that there is no continuance. It, it comes to a T, Third Street comes to a T with Fifth and, and then it doesn't go past it. But for whatever reason, on our, on the maps, it looks like it does. Well, a, the, a private developer who wants to expand the lot next to this non-existent, non-improved Third Street extension, wants to expand the lot next to it and then re, and then sell the property, you know, like wants to, you know, like expand the size of the lot. So that means we have to sort of abandon the lot, so to speak, for the use of a private instead of public use, which we're not using in publicly. So you have to discontinue the public way. Which, it's, so it's pretty straightforward. Like, it's not, it's not something we're, we're currently maintaining, it's not, it doesn't provide, it's not an access route to anything else. It just, for some reason, it just stops and it, and then it's just trees. So I think it's pretty straightforward. It's related. And then the next article is the disposition. So once, if town meeting approves for the discontinuance of this, then the disposition or like the sale or, or anyways, then the, the next article is authorizing the Board of Slayton to, to conduct the disposition of this. And in all likelihood, I suspect the guy who asked us in the first place would put a bid in for that, for that portion of the land. And it's, and there's, it's advantageous to the town because, you know, it's a little bit more taxes. It's, it's pretty marginal, but it's, you know, it's a little bit more private land for something that the town was using.
Katie?
I just want to, thank you Greg. I just wanted to also say that the reason this developer wants that piece of land is without it, the lot size is under the required, required acreage to actually develop a single-family home. So unless he gets this piece of land, unfortunately, he will be unable to develop that piece that he already owns.
There you go.
Is there already a house on part of what he's owns or no, he's just, there's nothing?
So he, there was a approval not required per the subdivision law application, I think in December, where they split a large lot that had a residential home. And they split off a portion of the property that did not have a house built on it. So that's where that stands.
Got it. Anybody else have any questions for either Greg or Katie regarding this?
I'm looking at a map, Katie, and if you don't know, that's okay. But behind Third Street, there's a bunch of green land, green space. Is that town-owned conservation land or is that developable property?
I know, I don't think it is owned by the town. I think it is privately owned, but there are a bunch of wetlands back there. So, you know, if someone were to try to develop that, of course, there would be a lot of constraints, both from state law and our municipal wetlands bylaws.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else? All right, so then we will move, not hearing any, any objections, we'll move J and K to be able to go to the finance committee as well. So draft control Q is the transfer from capital stabilization. Greg, this seems pretty straightforward as well. These were the items that were on, that we were going to try to fund during the annual town meeting, but we held off.
But yeah, yes and no, I mean, it's still, it's still important to consider that we are going to be using capital stabilization if, if this were to be transferred from it. But I, I believe the items are priorities. Again, we don't have a functional capital planning committee, so I'm speaking for, on their behalf. But I would, I would argue to them that, that these two items would, should be priority. So one is the police cruiser, which we are not paying for from the operating fund from the police department. And then one is the upgrades to the wifi system for this school district. And I understand this is the first of two such upgrades. I think it, so my understanding is it takes two years. And so you'll see a similar one unless we can find funding otherwise. But you'll see, you'll see this again next year, for the second year. And, and now it seems to be more crucial than ever that we have a reliable wifi system for the school system.
That goes to my point, and you commented on it again last night. We talked about it at one of our other meetings. If we can find a way to, and I don't want to use the finagle word, but if we can find a way to get the CARES Act funds to cover this, I would, you know, whoever is in charge of looking at that, I, I think we need to really push it because it, it seems to be a way that we can get it directly related to COVID.
Greg, where will capital stabilization be after these two items?
Give me two seconds. So after these two items, I have to do a spreadsheet work, just give me a second. Because I actually broke it down, because you already accepted the other article that is also capital stabilization related, which is the border road bridge easements for, for $280,000. So this, it's really three, for the whole Warren article, if this passes, for the whole our Warren articles, Warren articles, you would have three items that are withdrawing from the capital stabilization. So, so give me two seconds and I'll do, I'll do the quick math.
Does anyone else have any other?
Talk about something else while I.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Anyone else have any other questions or concerns regarding this while he is figuring out the, that, okay?
Number to me after if you want, Greg.
No, it's okay. I got it, I almost got it.
I'm sure other people want to know too.
Just so you know, you're up to two minutes.
So after the, thanks, after these two. So, no, no, I'm sorry, two more seconds, let me do the whole thing. I'll explain the whole thing. I know, I'm useless.
Not, oh. All right. Let me see. And so after this, after we get through this, then the last draft controls that we'll be discussing will be possible debt exclusion, the feasibility study, and the transfer from general stabilization and the town general fund. So I think we've gotten through most of the other ones at this point. Becky, so we know we've done A, D, N, M, M, R, R, J and K.
We have them all labeled, thank you.
And Q, which is what Greg's calculating a number for right now.
Yeah, I got it. So, so, so let me just walk it down. So at the beginning of FY '21, after the appropriations, actually, I don't know if we made any changes based on the June annual time meeting, but either way. So as of January or July 1st, 2020, there was $699,633 in capital stabilization. These two proposals, one for $45,000 and one for $72,000, would take us down to $582,633. And then I'm, I'm also proposing, which you already accepted, another $280,000 for the Florida Road Bridge easements. So that would, so after those three items, there would be a balance of $302,000.
Okay.
Jeff, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so, so then we'll move, that is draft control Q, so there's another one. Excellent. All right, so next, we have, let's see, it's eight, 10. Draft control, I just lost it. So obviously, it's pretty self-explanatory. Greg, you want to add anything about the, about the debt exclusion proposal for the fire station?
Oh, fire station?
Yeah.
There's not much to explain. I mean, like, that hasn't been said for, well before, even I got here. But I mean, we, we did ask for a recent, a recent, if there's any updates to the quote, and the quote's the same. So we, we put $16 million as the, as the total cost of construction, which includes the cost of the construction, the cost for subcontractors, and the cost for, for, you know, our owner's project manager and contingencies. And, and just for the, for the, the history, for the, you know, for the town or whoever's listening, the original fire station that we're still using was built in 1954. And it is no longer able to carry all the stuff that we have. So modern, modern equipment, modern vehicles, birthing, cleaning, weight training, all of it. So, but not only that, but it's, it's so old that it's kind of, it's, you know, it, there's certain upgrades that need to be made to it. We've been spending money on, on upgrading, whether it be HVAC or boiler systems, safety procedures. And it's expensive endeavor to maintain it. But the town hired an OPM, hired a designer, bought the land. And so it's, it's just a, as, as has been the case for two years since I got here, we're, we're waiting for this final, final day of exclusion. So a $16 million day of exclusion right now, I think is, I think the time is right. Otherwise, I wouldn't have posed this. But, you know, the, the rates, as already been said, the rates are quite low for bar, for borrowing. And construction costs, my understanding is those are also stable, which they were not before COVID. So now I, I believe the time is right. But we can talk about that further.
You know, it's ironic, Greg, based on the documents you sent to us back in 2007, what was the anticipated cost of building at that time, a new fire station?
I don't know, after, do you know, off the top of your head, I'd have to look.
I think it was about $7 million.
Right, and so that's the thing, the, the borrowing rates are good and the construction cost may be stable now. But as, as what I think you're saying is, you, you don't know. So it's six months from now, a year from now, certainly, it'll be, you know, the, the cost goes up exponentially, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the point is that we keep kicking this can down the road. And, and there's never such a thing as a good time. So we keep waiting for that good time. And I don't think that there is such a thing as a good time. And I think these, you know, first responders deserve a, a modern place for them to be able to function in. And it's only right that we do provide that for them. And, and I think it's been a long time coming. We've been putting this on back burner for many, many years. And I think it's something that we should really consider. And I'm, you know, to the opinion that this should be a priority to us. I understand some of us are going to be thinking about water and sewer, and that is a priority. I understand that. Some of us are going to be talking about, you know, the Green Meadow feasibility study. But I think, you know, the fire, fire station has been, been put on back burner for many, many years. And I think it's just about the right time for us to move this thing forward.
So I'll, I'll say my piece because I know I'm, I'm a little outside of everybody else on this one. And it's not. And it's nothing new from what I said at the tribe board meeting or at the budget subcommittee last night. But I, I think the game on the ground now is significantly different from what it was before this pandemic. I really think we're headed into a major recession. If you look at unemployment, if you look at the progression of the virus. And so I think the plan that we had in February, I, I don't know that we've collectively taken a look at that and say, does it need to be changed? Or maybe we have, and the answer from everybody is no, we're still going to go forward with it. And you know, to your point, Armin, about, you know, wanting a good spot for personnel, I seriously believe there is a risk that with the need for an operational override, with rising healthcare costs, with reductions in local aid, especially with the state punting only for a three-month budget of level funding, with the national situation deteriorating, that we might not be able to, be able to pay the staff we have in, in a couple of years if things are as bad. So I, I would rather, as I said last night, keep the staff paid, keep the first responders paid in a bad building than not have them paid in a new building and not have a job. So I, I do think that's a risk. It's very hard to predict that risk. And so I'm, I'm a bit more cautious on this one. That being said, I, I believe I am alone on this, on the FinCom, on this committee as well. And I do realize it's part of an overall capital plan, and it does need to be done. And I believe that all of those items are important on that capital plan. And so I'm, I'm prepared to support this in the context of the full capital plan and that we need to spread out those projects. And if this is what the entire group feels should go first, then I'm not going to, to vote no, just to try to push it later and bring up another thing. Even though that's my opinion is that other, other, that we can, we can wait on the building. And I still have not seen solid numbers on, I know, you know, I'm not talking about a full renovation of the fire station. But if we wait for a certain number of years, I understand the costs go up, but I, I've not seen solid numbers on those and how they compare to the operational cost of the new fire station, which is twice as big. And there will be significant costs with that of the capital that I wouldn't be surprised that the fire department comes to ask to fill the new building. I know that they haven't said they're going to do that, but that's the way the world works. I've seen this in, in a number of different projects. So I, I understand all the arguments for it. I understand it is way, way, way overdue. I understand the building is needed. But we are in a very difficult situation. And I think the, the, the situation economically is deteriorating rapidly and will soon collapse, especially with the federal inaction. And I just don't want to be caught with our pants down in a year when that happens. So that's, that's my piece.
And if I may, Jeff, I, I actually agree with a lot of what you said. And my issue isn't that we should say no to the fire station, because I don't think we should say no to the fire station. It's not an issue in my eyes of saying no to the fire station per se. My issue or concern is the global picture. And I think this is sort of what you get at, where there, you know, we have to take a look. And I think that our responsibility as board members is to say, is every, are we being, are we reaching too far by saying we can do that, everything that's on this list of things capitalized to do in the next two years? Is that fair in the current economic climate to our residents to ask of them to do that? If, if it is, if we think that is true as a group, fine, we move ahead with everything that's on the list. If it's not, then we should have the serious discussion of prioritization as to, okay, where do we go? And then set a plan that will let us to assure ourselves that we may meet the needs that we have that are listed among these things over the next several years and not over the next several decades. Because I think what's happened over time is that, to, to Armin's issue earlier, kicking the can, where it's been, it's never been the right time. So there has to be a commitment and there have, and there has to be a plan to meet that commitment. Rather than burdening at all at once with a big dump of, let's go with, you know, whatever the number is. And my concern is that the residents see this, not within a vacuum of a fire station, but within the big picture of fire station building, you know, whatever else is on the list, water and sewer. That is also different bucket of money, but coming out of the same pocket in reality. So I agree with Armin's point that it's time, with Greg's point too, that it's time. I agree with your point too, and this is sort of walking a fence, isn't it? But I agree with your point too, that it's not necessarily the absolute definitive best thing for our residents to do it at this point. So, but something is in there. We have to do something. Doing nothing is not an option. Doing something we can do, what that something is, I don't know. And I, that's where I want this group to sort of have that discussion. I want to hear a lot from residents too. And that's, and you know, over time, I've heard a lot from residents that have said, no. But I don't know if the residents have full insight into everything that's coming down, coming down the pike.
And David, I mean, to your point, they're saying no to what? I mean, they're saying no to taxes or they're saying no to the new fire station or?
No, I think that, I think that it's, my sense when I speak with people is that, that they're being put in a Sophie's Choice situation. Where if they, if they choose a school, they're saying no to the fire station. If they choose a fire station, they're saying no to the school. And they want both, but from a selfish standpoint, and I hate to use that word, because it's not selfish on their part. But from a personal standpoint, they understand that their own personal finances would not allow them to do all of that in one fell swoop. So can we find where is the best, what is the best path? Is the school one that we can put off? Because it's, it's not, you know, I don't know if that's the right answer or not, but that's, that's sort of our job. That's why we're in the tough role that we're in.
But I just think to, to your point, I think prioritizing is the smart way to go. But this just is my opinion. I mean, I see something when it comes to the feasibility study, we could do that next year. We don't have to do it this year. It's not, I, I, I'm, I'm not of the belief that, that the, you know, MSBA is not going to let us come back and, and submit, you know, the, you know, to apply for the feasibility study. I, I just don't buy that. But at the same time, I don't know.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that opinion. That's why I want to have more of that discussion and hear what everybody's thoughts are.
I don't know if there's a right or wrong to the fire station question, but there's an awful lot of people in town. They're sick of hearing about it, sick of reading about it, sick of seeing it come up at town meetings. It's been on several different, you know, long-range, long-range community plans, master plans. It's been on every capital improvement plan that I've ever seen. I mean, it's just been, it's just been there for so long. Sooner or later, we have to give it to the people in the town and let them decide. Is it the right time?
Bingo.
And I don't know the answer to this question, but from my, you know, from a few times I've been in there with the chief, kind of walking me through, and I know that Jeff, you probably got the tour in the last couple of weeks, a month or so. Sooner or later, the town administration is running the risk of having some government agency just say enough and close that building.
Who, who would that be? Because I know we got the DEP on us about water. Is there?
OSHA, think about OSHA.
Department of Labor Services.
Pick a government acronym that, that's involved with safety, well-being, health, almost anything. And, and they have an interest in what goes on in that building, because it fails on almost every, some, some part of every one of their tests. So at some point or other, somebody or some group of government, somebodies could come in and say, you know, Mayor, you've had enough of this. You gotta, you gotta, you know, move on and build this fire station. Oh, by the way, find a new place for these, you know, 30 guys to live and sleep when they're on duty and park your trucks. And then what do we do?
So Chris, having said that, and, and I'm just trying to drive discussion. Is the fire station a higher priority than the school? Or is, are they both on the same? Or do you want to ask the voters to, or the taxpayers to fund both at the same time? What's, what, what's your thought process on that? Not right or wrong, just where, you know?
I'm going to say, it's a long time since I had a Sophie's Choice reference.
When he said that, I, yeah.
For me, schools is always the number one priority. The, the health and well-being of the kids and their education always has to be a number one priority. I'm just saying that this particular project that, you know, you've been involved in since day one with the committees, and I see a couple of other people, you know, in this meeting that were involved. It's just, it's just that building is failing us as a community. And if it, if it gets to a point where others believe it's failed and they don't allow us to use it anymore, you know, that, that, that creates a whole different set of, you know, needs and everything, everything else. It would be nice to do it at our pace and our cost. I mean, the pace has been, I'm sure for some, you know, the supporters of the fire station project and Chief Stowers and the rest, the pace has been painstaking at best. But I, I just think that the, you know, the people, the people should have the, I think they want to vote it and get it out of the way. It's going to happen or it's not, but I think the people that pay attention to these types of things in our community, those people that, you know, are on these types of calls and, and read the minutes and pay attention, I think they want to vote on this. That's my opinion. From the people that I talk to, they, they, they want to, you know, let's get, you know, crap, get off the pot kind of type of thing. Not everybody, but it's time. We've spent millions of dollars on studies and everything else around a fire station. And we're still in the same, you know, dungeon that we've been in for however many years.
Yeah.
Well, the one thing we do have, the one thing we do have is, is that we didn't have before is a definitive location, definitive plans that are set for that location. So we've made progress even with the money we've spent. And, and again, I'm not saying that this, that we should not do this. I'm saying, is this, oh, is this something to move forward along with all of the other things that are going to cost the residents money? Or do we just put them all out there? What's, what's the?
Well, so it's funny that, that both Armin and David both referenced, you know, almost school versus fire station, kind of. Because in my mind, looking at it, I agree the fact that there's never going to be a good time. If the number that Armin said, you know, was in 2000 and whatever, this fire station was $7 million. Well, when the fire station was $7 million, it wasn't a good time to, to do it. And now that it's $16 million, it's not going to be an any better time to present it. But, you know, my personal opinion, and we'll discuss that later as far as the MSBA feasibility study, I firmly believe we should take that out of general stabilization. I realize it's not a popular opinion, but I think that it is, that is one way that that study gets paid for without having the taxpayers have to fund it. Once that moves forward, so you can get the school started, if the fire station is approved, then the fire, you start payment on the fire station quicker, which means it's less time when the town is paying for both a fire station and a school. So I'm kind of looking at the, at the longer range picture. So I realized, so my, my top are obviously fire station, water, and, and, and the school. Because we kind of know that all of those need to happen. I understand it's not going to be a popular decision, but at some point, we have to set this town up for success for the future. And that might mean that we make some kind of unpopular decisions now to really stand up and say, you know, we've needed a fire station since the 90s, and it's never been a good time. So we need to take that leap. And, and these firefighters are there for us when we need them. And it is time for the community to be there for them. And if they can't, and if they vote it down, they do. But unfortunately, we really need to start moving this forward, I think.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Justine, you're making some great points, but if you, you, you're hitting something, we'll talk about the nail on the head. We're talking about the safety of our constituents and our citizens, but, but we're not thinking about the safety and the health of our firefighters. So that's not fair. You know, you're talking about these people are going to be responding to.
I'm going to stop you, because I'm not saying we don't need a new fire station. I absolutely agree with that. So I, I just want to make that absolutely clear. I, I know we need a new fire station, but what I would like to hear, Justine, is where, where do you put the operational override? Which to me means being able to keep staff on.
But that's not even, that's not, that's not even on, on the agenda.
But it is in the five-year plan that we talk about, and it is going to be a major increase. Residents, that's got to be spread out like David mentioned and, and considered as a piece of that.
So, so here's, here's my personal opinion on that, Jeff, is that that was a five-year operational override. That was a plan that was presented by FinCom to the board committee. But that was not something that Board of Selectmen ever agreed to. That was not something that any of the employees that we pay to give us advice has said that we will need. And so I honestly do think that, because I did talk to the town administrator, I talked to the town accountant, I talked to the town treasurer, and really looked into that after it was discussed in February. And so my personal opinion is that as a municipality, we will move forward with what we're doing. And we will also continue to cut and tighten the belt operationally, because we will have to. But bottom line is, we still need buildings. We still need, we need buildings to operate in. We need schools. We need, we need all of that. So I firmly believe that, you know, we do what we can now. And we continue to cut if we have to, as far as, as far as different things operationally. I mean, I, I've worked in municipality for 30 years. I am not, I am not immune to knowing how, that you're going to have no increase, or you're going to have, you know, you'll have your, you'll have, your line items won't increase. You'll have to cut your budget. It's just, it's a fact of life in municipalities. And so that's just my personal opinion about that part.
I, I generally agree with that analysis, Justine. And the, the other point, and I made this last night, but there's a different crowd, that when the operational override was brought up, the scary thing about it, and I think that it, it shook all of us. And it, but it's important to understand what the dire situation is. Is that if we were to pass, say, a $1 million override, based on the analysis done by, for operations only, based on the analysis that was done by the FinCom in that presentation, granted, it was never official presentation as far as we were concerned. It was just more or less talking points. But the point is that through their own analysis, we would be doing another one or $2 million override within two years of that time. And all that does is build, 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 build. So the real issue that we need to talk about as a community is how do we address our problems in a way that does not require that? And the only way to do it is to find more revenue. And, and that's why I keep coming back to the water issue, because I want to make sure that, that that doesn't get lost, or pun intended, brought down the river, when we are doing all these other things, and then we can't address the water needs, because we can't, we can't ask our residents to pay anymore. And that's where I get into my whole frustration over priorities. Where are we? Can we do it all? I don't think so. Can we do, can we do, we have to do something, as I said earlier, but, you know.
And we can ignore water. We already got the regulatory warnings now. So that one clearly needs to jump to the top.
So David, you asked me about the schools versus the fire. I'll just say that, you know, we all get a lot of the same emails from various government entities and watchdog groups and, and all sorts of groups. And I also have my, another group of people who I, I work with and I'm around a lot of, a lot of my time, that are older folks, who still read the newspaper. And I'm constantly being barraged by envelopes in the mail with different things on, you know, all the things that are going on and all the positives and negatives about what's going on in the world. And I have yet to get one that's telling me how bad it would be if we didn't have a fire station in Maynard. But I get them daily, and I'm reading them all the time, both online and in paper, that the damage and the potential damage to the kids that aren't in their seats, in their schools, living the normal school life that they were living prior to March or April, is the risk of that to the community and to, you know, the world in general is far greater than whether or not we put up a fire station. So the, the kids have to be the priority in terms of, you know, if we have a choice of, if we've got $1 left, and we can put it either in the fire station or the, or the, towards the green medal schools, I get to take it over to the green medal school and put it right in the bucket. But, you know, we're not in that situation, but the, the importance of, of all that educational, all the, all the, you know, things that have to happen in the educational world are far more important in the long run than the fire station. But that's not to say that the fire station shouldn't be addressed, and we shouldn't allow the people in town to address the fire station. I've also had several people that are parents say, do you really want me teaching my kids? And the answer is no. But it's just, you know, just what the priorities need to be. I think that we need to really focus. Because we have been focused on the green medal for, I don't know, it seems like a real long time, but in reality, it's probably only been like three years or less, you know, 18, 24 to 36 months that we've had this hyper-focus on the issues, because when they were first discovered. But I just think that, you know, to neglect that and Cause when they were first discovered, but I just think that, you know, to, to neglect that in any way or push that off or try and say, we don't know, and I don't, I don't know the answer to the question that Armin brought up, whether or not if we push it off and we push it off, will the, um, MSBA still, still shine favor on us? I don't know, but it sounds from some of the comments made from some of the people at some of the meetings that I've zoomed in on, I saw it seen on Facebook or, or read about. It might not be a risk that we should take.
The other thing, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
Please.
Um, I, so the other thing, it, it's interesting. So if we're talking about a school or a fire station, what would end up happening then is, so the feasibility moves, the feasibility study moves forward and then you're not going to build a, a school for, you know, another four, five-ish years. And then you're gonna start paying on that. So would that mean in theory, if you're choosing a school and, and I'm not saying anybody is, but if, if a school is chosen over a fire station, does that mean that the fire station gets pushed another twenty years while we're paying off a school? So that's kind of why my concern about, yeah, I understand that we, we shouldn't have to do it all. We shouldn't have to pay for it all. But I think the problem is that we have kicked, we have kicked these cans down the road so far that this is where we're at.
Right. There's other, one other point I want to make, a major item, uh, in regards to these is that, again, going back, it's the same item about the lawnmower except for pulling the stabilization fund for the feasibility study is that we're about to, you know, and I know that they're not bylaws. I know that we don't have them, but, uh, what's the point of even having these policies if we're not going to follow them? So I'll, I'll push back against that argument every single time. And so now as soon on the same night that we're going to accept these financial policies, which I think look good and in which we say we're going to attempt to build, I believe it's over a period of ten years or something like that, our general stabilization fund up to ten percent. And the first thing we do is knock our general stabilization fund back a couple percentage points right away. So I, I, I understand why we're doing it, but I just wanna, wanna know if we're gonna do that, what is our plan? And maybe this is from Greg, to get that general stabilization fund back up to where it is and beyond in a reasonable timeframe. Or if we are going to go into a time of rate economic need, don't we want that still a bit beefier so we can withdraw down if the emergency, uh, need arises?
I can speak to that now if you'd like.
Please.
So, um, everything you make, all, all those points are, are correct. Like we, I, I am proposing as I think there's no, is, I think everyone's aware that I am proposing the withdrawal, the transfer from the general stabilization for the feasibility study in order to lower the impact on the taxes, uh, uh, by the community. But as to your point, that would be, um, we would be losing that amount of, of up to a million dollars potentially of feasibility, uh, of transfer, of general stabilization, um, from that fund. However, we have an understanding that potentially half of that will be reimbursed by the MSBA. I also am proposing not to withdraw from general stabilization to address the shortfall from the projected revenue decrease for FY twenty-one. So that was going to be another four hundred fifty thousand dollars. So in other words, I'm not asking for nearly a million dollars withdrawal. I'm asking for about five hundred thousand dollars withdrawal. At the end of the day, if you go by my proposed scenario of general stabilization, which was put us about one point eight million dollars in general stabilization at the end of the day, which is over four percent. Again, not ten percent, but the, the concept is to continue to contribute to that general stabilization fund year by year. And that, but that is a difficult exercise to predict because it's all based on free cash. However, free cash seems to be good. The town seems to be in a building boom right now, and I don't take that term lightly. We can, we, we are, we can, I can name a number of developments that are going on right now. And that the board just this evening accepted an article to allow for more development on Powder Mill Road. So there, there, I, what I mean to say is that we are not at a standstill in Maynard. The economy will continue to grow and there's no reason to think that there won't be a, a cer- a certain amount of free cash. I won't say substantial or significant, but I will say that, that yes, of course, there's always a risk or an uncertainty of, of a recession. However, we, we felt like that might be the case as we were going into COVID and that did not pan out. Like the, the, the buildings continue to be built, the, the Dunkin' Donuts still open. So there, there's, I don't mean to say you're, you're unfounded. I really am not. I mean, I, I'm saying this in all due respect. But I, I, we can have different perspectives on the, on the, on the economic status of the town. And I believe for what it's worth, that this economic status is good. And therefore we will be able to contribute to the general stabilization periodically. At the same time, we have a general stabilization to be used. If we were only to continue to transfer into it and not out of it, that would do us no good. Yes, we would get a certain amount of interest off of the savings accounts. That is the general stabilization. But that wouldn't be enough to make up for, for anything. It would be marginal. So we, we should look to it as a funding source to meet our needs and we have needs. So yes, in, in, in the case of a recession or any sort of, um, downturn in the ability of the taxpayers to pay their taxes, we look to the general stabilization in a combination of certain cuts and whatnot, as we've already been proposed and we're moving forward with. So I'm, I'm confident in my, in my, my recommendation to, to use general stabilization for the purposes of the feasibility study with the understanding that it'll be reimbursed and we will, and we will abide by the financial policies and that I am proposing, um, that will, that will guide the town towards contributions, um, and building up the general stabilization.
And to your, to your point, go ahead, go ahead. No, no, go ahead, David.
Now, uh, last night though, didn't you say that your plan was going to be to propose, um, I forget the term that you used, a, uh, one-year override?
No, that's not my recommendation.
Oh, that's not?
Discuss.
I thought you were saying last night that that was your recommendation.
No, I was asked to provide that option.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad. Yeah, I mean, to your point, uh, Greg, we, not to be overly optimistic, but I think the, you know, the, the future, uh, forecast for, uh, Maynard, uh, when it comes to, you know, the opportunity of generating revenue, uh, it's pretty bright and not to be over optimistic. And I think that'll be, give us an opportunity to, um, you know, rebuild our stabilization fund and bring in some more money, uh, from all these, uh, new, uh, developments that are taking place. Um, and, and I'm overly, you know, optimistic that those, that's gonna happen. And we've just got to make sure that, you know, we continue being proactive in our attempt to bring in the developments that we're looking to bring in for us to generate the kind of revenues. And, and that's not even counting. We're not even talking, you didn't even bring up the marijuana retail opportunity because that's another opportunity that may not happen this year, but definitely next year. Uh, so those are all, there's a lot of good things happening in this town. And I just think we, we need to be a little bit more positive about what's happening in this town and promote all the, uh, all, all these bright opportunities that Maynard is, is, uh, you know, experiencing it. And, um, I, I, I don't know. Uh, and, and I, I understand what David is saying. I'm the same. I feel the same way. Water and sewers should be number one, uh, priority to us because without that, you can't have development, especially when you're talking about Powder Mill. I mean, you know, you're talking about a, a tremendous stretch of, and we are going to be talking about the, the John Deere, you know, the Powder Mill equipment place, which is going to be an opportunity for us to, uh, again, bring in something really, um, you know, uh, fantastic to the town, hopefully. Uh, but to David's point, yes, the water sewer is going to be a, a concern. Um, but, um, it's, it's the old adage, what do you do? You put the carriage before the horse or the horse before the carriage? And, you know, it's one of those tricky things that you have to think about, but, uh, again, I, and, and I'm, uh, I'm going back to what Chris said and, and, and Justine said, and, and I agree with Jeff. Uh, yes, school's very important and, and we definitely have to have great schools. Uh, but a building does not constitute great education, just the, the way I'm looking at it. Um, you know, we, uh, I, I, to me, the, being, having a new building doesn't mean you're going to have great education, you know? Um, yes, it's important to have a, a new school, but at the same time, it doesn't guarantee a great education. We need to be better at attracting good teachers, attracting the, the right type of, uh, programs so that we could have great education in, in this town because that helps with real estate values too, obviously. So I don't know, but, um, um, you know, everybody's got to have their own opinions. If you, everybody thinks that, you know, uh, taking money from stabilization for, uh, the feasibility study, I'm in favor of that. And that obviously will free up for us to just move forward with the fire station, uh, to take it to the voters. Uh, it'll be an easier sell, in my opinion. Um, that's just my opinion.
And, and the, the fact that half of that's going to come back in.
Yeah.
You can be not nearly as nervous as we either, but just your point, Armin and, and Greg about future growth, is that's, that's money that's not guaranteed yet that we don't know.
Yeah, I agree.
Now, and we get that money anyway, great. We fill the general stabilization fund up a bit. We more fully, uh, fund a capital improvement plan, right? There's, we've lost nothing by being a bit more cautious.
I agree.
Uh, rather than for the only response you have to fill that back up is the, the hope of new growth.
Yeah.
Founded, but there's always risks with those uncertainties.
I don't disagree. I, I, if I, if I, I don't disagree. I know I didn't interrupt you, Jeff, but I'm just, I, I disagree. I'm just saying that, that I drive around town just like you guys do and I, and I see, I see an ice cream store open. I see, I see the Dunkin' Donuts open. I see the, the, um, I, it's, I, I'm just saying, I'm, I know it's anecdotal, but it's not to a degree. Like I, I can see development happening.
I'd like one comment. Go ahead, Jeff.
I see, I see restaurants not being filled and restaurants is obviously the biggest one right now, not being filled nearly to the levels that they would be pre-COVID and that.
That's property tax.
Huge.
I mean, that's not property taxes. Like we're, we're, we're like the, that's all I'm saying. It's like, it's a different, it's a different funding source. That's meals and excise tax, which we, why I'm recommending revision to the operating fund, fund to, to adjust for.
Okay, anyway.
The one, the one issue that, um, residents need to understand is, you know, Armin, you spoke about, um, the, you know, Parker Street project and Greg, et cetera. I think the residents are looking for, uh, tax bill relief. And I think we need to be honest with them that in reality, the tax bill relief is probably not going to be coming. Because what revenue comes in, additional revenue that comes in has to fill in these holes that we've been talking about for the last forty-five minutes that are going to need to, whether it be for operational costs. So if we get, and it might help us not to have to increase at a higher rate. But it, I don't think we can lead people to believe that because we are having an economic boom that our taxes, our tax bill is going to go down. I don't think that that's true. And we need to be honest about that. So, you know, you see it, you hear it, you see it, uh, wherever you read about, uh, you know, what's going on in Maynard where people say, well, it'd be great when, uh, Parker Street is up and running and we'll be able to get some tax relief. Uh, and I think most of the people, when they write that or say that, are talking about their tax bill. And I think we have to be honest about it and say, I don't expect your tax bill to be going down. As a matter of fact, you can expect it to continue to rise, uh, hopefully for at least a couple of years, not as fast as it has been over the course of time. But that's the message that we need to make clear that, uh, the economic development that we got, especially if we've got these projects that we have to fund and everything else, is not going to help to reduce someone's tax bill. And that's what the majority of the residents care about is what comes on the piece of paper that comes to them every, uh, four months? How much do I owe? And that number's most likely not going to go down.
But I think David, if we paint a, a good picture going forward, we could say to them that maybe down the road, we're not going to be raising taxes. So that to me, it's in a way.
Well, we're always going to raise taxes. There's never a year, you're never going to have a year where you're not going to raise your taxes because we have contracts that we have that require us to increase our revenue.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, and, and from a, you know, just a general, uh, making a general point that as, as we go forward, we may not have to go to, to that, you know, level where we're raising the kind of taxes that they're fearful of. But at the same time, you have to look at the balance. The real estate value in Maynard is going up. There's, there's a reason that, that's happening. Uh, developments are taking place in Maynard. At the same time, the surrounding towns are getting expensive to live in. So it's an opportunity for Maynard to shine. So that means we need to step up and, and bring in the kind of services and provide what, you know, uh, what the, uh, other residents would like to, uh, to have to move into Maynard. Because look, it's the first house that I've seen in Maynard that sold for over seven hundred thousand dollars. That, you know, when was the last time you heard a, a real estate, you know, value of seven hundred thousand dollars in Maynard? That's something to be proud of and that's something to be, you know, uh, you know, being, to be, uh, excited about. Cause I think it's going to help us and, and down the road. And look, I'm concerned about taxes too. I'm, I'm a resident too. I don't want to pay higher taxes. Nobody does. Uh, but at the same time, you have to look at what do we need to do to move forward to bring Maynard into the future? And what are some of those things that we have to do? And, and, you know, maybe green marrow is one of them, but I still say, yeah, if you don't have a good fire station, um, that, that could be a, that could be a concern down the road.
Okay, so I'm wondering, we're, we're butting up against, it's ten of nine. Do we want to take a five-minute break? Just walk away, come back, finish the discussions with the preliminary discussions with the rest of the articles? And then, um, continue on with the agenda? Does that make sense to people? Yes, no, maybe?
I'm good to go. I don't know.
I'm good, I'm good to go.
All right then. All right, fine. We will continue on then. Um, do we want to, so, so that was a discussion regarding the fire station. Do we want to have further discussion next week regarding this? Um, David, I know you said something about, you, you.
I'd like to hear from residents. I mean, um, you know, whether it be people here tonight, I don't know if people that are online that are residents. I don't see many. Uh, I see three, I think, uh, other than us. Well, school committee members, I, I didn't count, uh, but actual residents. The, um, so yes, I would like to hear from them, but I don't think, I don't know if it's going to change anyone's mind. So if that's the case, then we might as well just vote and, um, but.
There may be value simply because I don't know that a lot of residents knew that we were going to be talking about tonight, just to give them a forum in which to, if we put it out there a little stronger or before next meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me. I don't, I.
Change in the overall decision and so.
What recommendation would you have for that? Like we, like we post these meetings, I know, but who checks those postings? I admit. But like who, who, how would you, are you talking about reverse nine-one-one? What do you, what do you propose?
No, I'm, I post on Facebook, something like that, saying that this will be discussed at the next meeting.
Yeah, but this was on the, this was on the agenda for tonight's meeting. So if anybody was interested, they could have come on to.
Well, you know what though? It, 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 when it's on the agenda as, um,
Oh, I see what you're saying. Got you.
If they don't go into the agenda.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because of the agenda, they see articles for town meeting.
Yes.
And unless you're tuned in, you don't know that that, that means fire station.
That's correct. Yeah.
Just, what's the, what's the plan if people are on the call because it's not a hearing? It's just a comment, it's something, a conversation. We're going to continue in our meeting. Are we gonna, is it gonna be a, um, open floor free-for-all? How are we gonna do this on Zoom?
The, I mean, the, the other thing we could do, I'm sorry, Chris, um, I'll, I'll let you talk and, go ahead, Chris.
I'm done. That was the question.
Good point. And the, the, the place for public input, they are here, but they'll have their shot at town meeting as well and they'll, that will, that will be.
Well, the, the other thing, um, I'm thinking is if we, if we do in fact have a meeting next Tuesday, um, we can obviously spread the word ourselves as well that this is something. And if for some reason you, you want public comment, if, you know, we, we do have a public comment section in the beginning. So people are more than welcome to, to talk in the beginning. So it wouldn't be more, it wouldn't be a public hearing. But it would just be if they wanted to express their opinion and they can obviously, this is recorded, this is on Facebook. Um, and, and everything else. So they can also hear what we have said back and forth tonight as well. Um, so I don't know how people feel about that.
I mean, it'll be good to get their input, obviously, because it's important that we hear, you know, uh, what they have to say. But at the, at the end, we have to make that decision, you know, what we believe that we'd be the right to do.
You know, I feel, I don't think it's going to change the overall decision that's made. So if we want to go ahead tonight, I, I think that's, that's okay. Um, and then the public input, you know, the opportunity was there and it will be there for town meeting. So I, I'm okay either way.
And we don't even know, you know, for town meeting, we don't even know how that's going to look. I mean.
We haven't gotten to that on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, it, town meeting is gonna, it could, it could, it could be much different even than the spring because the, um, somebody just posted something on here and it took my attention away. Could be much different because first off, what I, we don't even know if we're going to have the space where we had the outdoor one. If we need to do it outdoor, given what's happening with the, the planning board discussions, we don't know if there'll be trucks filling up half that spot based on what the discussion we heard last week. So, um, and then will the, will the governor change things relative to how many people can be at any gathering? Who knows? We don't know what it's going to look like town meeting. So I want to make sure that people have the, the. We don't know what's gonna look like town meeting, so I wanna make sure that people have the opportunity to speak. But I was told, apparently, that there are people on Facebook Live that have questions that are being posted, and so, just for whatever it's worth.
Yeah, I it's up to, this is Megan's Mudo, you know, I am monitoring it, I think there's less questions and more just some kind of back-and-forth conversation.
Okay.
To, you know, share.
I'm just reading, I'm just reading the comment that came up, that.
So what is it saying?
I would, I would caution against, until the board decides that a policy of accepting comments on Facebook, I would caution against accepting for the, for the, for the public record Facebook comments.
Unless, unless, unless we were to post them all as part of the minutes of the meeting, then town, open meeting hall would require us to do that.
And then wouldn't we also need to know their name and address in order to?
Yeah, I, I, I you can do it if you want, but I don't.
It's, it's, it's a dangerous, it's a dangerous path to go down.
You know, unfortunately, and and for for those who are watching, we actually, I did speak with Greg about this la, after our last meeting too, because I think that people are trying to access us more and more, and we're becoming more accessible. But like everything, it it's a process, and we wanna make sure it's done thoughtfully, and that it's done right, so.
Now, with that said, it's, it's not as if we don't take some of those comments that are posted on Facebook individually to look at and say, okay, that's something that we wanna take with us and bring it to our next meeting, or whatever it is, based on some of the comments. But to your point, that's not something that we wanna entertain, you know, during the meetings, I'm not sure.
The other challenge is the discussion really needs to be had in the context of the entire.
Yes, correct.
It's not a single item, there's.
If you can sign into Facebook Live, you can sign into Zoom for the most part. And participate the way you're supposed to participate.
Okay, so, are we saying then that we'll move draft control, so, I mean, the vote will just be that we're gonna move all of these draft controls to FinCom, so are we saying we're gonna vote that we're okay with moving draft control E to FinCom then, you know? I don't see any objections at the moment, so, okay. All right. So that brings us to draft control XX, which is the feasibility study.
I've made my point, I'm, I'm okay.
You talk about the stabilization.
Just to explain that there's, there's three articles related to it, just for clarity.
Yeah.
So as I, as I said with David's point, and I actually appreciate you, Dave, bringing that up, because I didn't realize I wasn't clear about it, so I will be clear about now.
Did you understand, Jeff, was I totally off last night, did you understand that?
We were presented two options, what we're seeing now was one of them, and what you were talking about was another, so I think there were both.
And I thought that you were proposing the other one, and I was like, you're all right.
No, 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 I was, I was trying to be objective, and I guess I didn't do a good job, so let me, but now I am not being objective, so I I will tell you, I'll explain again. And and it's in the, it's in the public contents, but I'll explain for anyone who's listening, so when this was brought up, so, I'm sorry, let me, again, for the public content, the context. The Massachusetts School Building Authority reached out to the school, to the school district and the town of Maynard, seeing we'd be interested in fulfilling what we had already applied for a partnership with the MSBA to pursue renovations or reconstruction of the Green Meadow Elementary School. We, we accepted that initial proposal for partnership, we are going through an eligibility period right now where we provide data and background as to the current conditions of the school. The next, the next step of that partnership, of which the the great advantage is reimbursement from the state. And we understand it could be upwards of fifty percent reimbursement for the costs of this project. Which is not insignificant, because we don't know what the final construction cost, but it would be much more than this fire station, and we don't. So we, I I believe we should take advantage of that partnership. But there is an understanding that, that the MSBA requires an affirmation of moving forward that partnership through a town meeting vote for the funding scheme, and however that funding we we determine. But that, that affirmation, my understanding is that it's, it needs to be done by the beginning of the new calendar year, so January first, twenty twenty-one. There are, so then, then at the tri-board meeting, we had just the, I can't remember how long ago it was, but a couple, a couple of weeks ago, we had, we had a discussion as to what sort of options there may be on the table to fund for this feasibility study. Feasibility study is an examination of what the both concurrent conditions are, and what potential offers, options you have to either reconstruct or renovate the elementary school and meet the needs of the community that the current elementary school is providing. And you have to do an honors project manager, you hire a design firm, they do the feasibility study for you. But the town still has to, has to provide the cost upfront, so to speak. And that feasibility study, we put a placeholder of up to a million dollars, but the MSBA hasn't told us how much it costs, because we don't know, because it depends on the scope of the work, so if it takes a year or two, that's a certain cost, if it takes a third year, which is unlikely, usually feasibility studies are about one, two years. But that might be even more cost, so we we put a relatively conservatively high estimate for the cost of the feasibility study at a million dollars. It may be less, it may be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and again, of whatever that amount, half of that is expected to be reimbursed by this, by the state. So, now I've gotten to the options, so, one option is, and there may be others, but this is the, here's the current options. General stabilization withdrawal, so, as we've already discussed, at length of a million dollars, what you would do is you would put that money aside for accounting purposes, and then we would, and then we would use that money to pay for the, for the feasibility study, and then be reimbursed periodically by the MSBA. That's option one. And so there's no, and because that money is already available, there would be no increase in the tax levy. Option two is to a combination of general stabilization withdrawal and for what's called a a capital outlay expenditure exclusion. So it's a debt exclusion or an override, whichever you wanna call it in this case, but it's only for one year, so it's an artificial increase to your tax levy for one year. And in this case, it's for the particular project of the feasibility study, so, so the proposal would be to split five hundred thousand dollars from the general stabilization, five hundred thousand dollars from this one-year outlay expenditure exclusion, now, we would be, we would be increasing the tax levy for that one-year exclusion. And that that bills are probably hit for the third quarter tax bills, but let's say, so we would be, we would be collecting all five hundred thousand dollars worth of that, because we don't know how much the cost of feasibility is, it would be, so you have to assume that it's the full, that's the full million dollars, which means you need the full five hundred thousand dollars, so, you and that's the sort of commitment that the MSBA needs to hear for the affirmation for partnership. And then the downside is that if it's less than, than a million dollars, which it, and it's, it could very well be, I can't return those checks, so once we put the tax levy onto the, onto the taxpayers, my understanding is that's, that's it, there's no refund checks, because the cost of the project was lower, it just means that we, we withdraw from general stabilization less. So right, right, as I've already said, and I'll just say it again, right now, my, my current recommendation is to do the complete transfer from general stabilization, again, through the context of what I've, and I know this is very last second, but, but through the context that Jeff said earlier, you know, he said it's important to hear all the, all the proposals, which includes a change in my recommendation to address the shortfall for the, for the general fund, because we have, we have word that the House, Senate, and the Baker political administration came to an agreement that they will not be reducing state aid by less than what the last year's fiscal year was amount. So that we, we had estimated about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth to, to because we, we estimated the certain, you know, we didn't know how much the state aid may decrease by, so I'm, I'm, I'm proposing not withdrawing for that purposes. So I know I already said that this evening, and it's probably easier to see in a spreadsheet, but it, yeah, there you go. But that was, that was a lie, I don't know if that makes any more sense, Dave. But, but there's two options, and, and one is all general stabilization, and the second one is half general stabilization.
No, I I got that, and, and, you know, at the end, I guess where I got stuck, you said it again tonight, where you said, I'm proposing. And it's, so it appears, you know, the last line you said was, I'm proposing.
Yeah, very good.
And I, okay.
Very good, but it's in the context of everything else, right, it's in the context of, of not using that money for the general.
Greg, if we don't pull it from stabilization, was there a cost of borrowing for that, or is it something we would?
There's a cost of borrowing for the one year.
For the one year, because we would borrow it, and then.
It's a hundred and twenty-six dollars, I think.
No, I think he's, I think he's asking a cost, like an additional cost to borrow money, right? Jeff, like above and beyond.
Oh, well, yes. Like taking out a loan?
That's not correct, it's a capital exclusion, there's no cost, you're just voting for it, there's not a debt. It's a debt.
I think Jeff's question.
No, I'm, I'm, Mike, I'm talking about the proposal where only half comes out of stabilization.
Doesn't make a difference, the five hundred thousand is a capital exclusion, has nothing to do with debt. You're just voting it, therefore, there's only the cost of what it would be if you proved it. There's no debt with it at all, they are not one and the same.
I knew you were asking that, Jeff.
Asking for borrowing, you're not borrowing anything.
Right, we're not borrowing, so there's no cost, because, like, so you're right, like, we're not paying interest on this.
Okay.
But, but, and we're not paying bond council, and we're not paying those sort of. That's, that's true, but we are asking for an increased cost to the taxpayers.
That's, I understood.
And the five hundred?
Five hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions, concerns? About this, or Greg?
So your recommendation is the one million coming out of?
It is, but of course, that's, my, my vote doesn't really matter, so it's whatever.
Right, the the million where half of it gets refunded, right, David?
Right, yeah, right. Or re. MSBA reimbursed.
Correct. And I'm really hoping it's less than a million, but we'll go with that to start.
It might be.
So does the MSBA.
And we're still, you know, and I realize this is, this is a whole other conversation, but as far as MSBA, you know, I realize we're still in the pipeline, I realize we're still doing everything, but, you know, obviously, everything has taken a hit, but they are still planning on moving forward with, with these different projects.
Yeah.
It would be politically unwise to not fund school projects, if I was in the.
At this point, yeah.
They would find the money, but the money for the MSBA comes out of meals, uh, sales tax, right, because of one percent or two percent out of sales tax.
I don't, I'm not sure, it may, I'm not sure.
So does anybody have a problem with moving this article, and Greg, so is it going to be article, because I'm on my phone?
XX.
Is it Article XX, Transfer General Stabilization, MSBA Feasibility Study?
That's XX, yes.
That is XX, okay.
That's for the full amount?
That's for Transfer General Stabilization.
Yes. Yeah.
Ability, one million dollars, okay. All right, so, does anyone have a problem if we move that over to finance committee as well? We can again have further discussion next week if we feel like we want to, but in the meantime, we'll get over.
We're good.
I think it's relatively minor. Especially with the reimbursement.
Yeah.
All right, next is gonna be Draft Control M, the Capital Outlay Expenditure, no? Because that's.
Skip them that one.
Uh, so Draft Control, so we're striking Draft Control M from everything. The Draft Control G, the Transfer from General Stabilization for the FY twenty-one shortfall, you're not proposing that anymore, correct? Greg?
Yeah, that, that's right, so I'm, right.
So you're proposing to strike G from that as well? So you want to move to Draft Control F, which is just the town general fund budget?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm following along, so I'm making sure that runs, yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay, so, do you want to give us a little, but I know, I think we're up to speed, but if you wanna continue?
Yeah, no, just really quick, is that, is that, you know, originally estimated revenue decreases were from a couple of different sources, one being state aid, but because of the news that came on like Thursday or Friday last week, state aid should be level funded from last year, which is what we budgeted for in the FY twenty-one budget, that the town already approved, so, so we don't have to go back and do that again, but we still have to solve for the other revenue shortfalls, which we, we projected for, which is from local receipts, so meals, meals, meals and excise taxes primarily. And so for that, you know, we, we kinda, we did like a sixty-forty split between the town and school departments. And so that, that comes out to a certain amount of decreases per line, well, that's how the town is doing it, so per the different functions of, of the budget, you kinda see it's, it's, it's referenced here on our, on our draft article. And, but the full amount of the two hundred and sixty-five thousand, so sixty percent of that, of that remaining shortfall, that two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars is just out of the one function, which is Maynard Education, and I can't speak for the school district, but at last night's, at last night's budget subcommittee meeting, the school committee liaisons heard, heard all this, and then they're gonna go back to the school committee, so I understand, they may provide correspondence as to their recommendations back to the board, but as of right now, this, this article still stands.
So do we want to, and we can obviously discuss it now, but again, I I think, I keep saying if, but it sounds like we're, we're probably gonna have a meeting next week, so do we want to you know, we can discuss this and then, and wait, because I know they're having a meeting on Thursday, so they'd probably be able to get information to us by then. So the sixty-forty split that we, you know, that that we kind of unofficially have done in the past, or whatever, so, but the one thing that that is different is that the CARES Act money that we will we will be getting from the state, we're not subjecting that to that sixty-forty split, correct, so we're, we're pretty much giving as much as we can to the schools, to support the schools. And, and we're, the town side isn't gonna have that much of a
Right.
anticipate having that much of a cost. Okay. Okay, does anybody have any questions? Comments, whatnot? On this? No? All right. So we'll hold back F? And put it on next week, Greg, if that's okay?
Yeah, of course.
Actually, I think that's, I think that's the only one we're holding back.
I think it is, I'm just gonna double check.
Yeah, it is.
All right, congratulations, everyone. That's, that's no small undertaking, that's good.
All right, so, I.
And I, before we move on, Justine, I wanna say to the board, from my perspective, I really appreciate this conversation tonight. I think that we went into some difficult, yet detailed discussion, and we're honest with one another, and honest with the, the residents that might be listening. And that's what's key for good governance, so I I think that we should be happy about that.
I also wanna thank you for entertaining my questions, I know I'm newer to the process and haven't been involved, especially on the, the thorny issue of the fire station as long as you guys have. And it's also difficult to have these conversations when a lot of the arguments are about an unknown future, so I appreciate your, your.
Your questions are very valid, Jeff.
Jeff, I'm just thankful that there's someone else to ask a whole.
I remember those times when you said, I'm just new to this.
Well, but it's, it's, I'm not, I'm new to this particular project. I'm not, I'm not new to having questions about an uncertain future, and I I hope you're right, I, I, you know, I'm the.
Excellent, all right, so then, if I have this correct, we are going to move to approve to move to finance committee. Draft Controls A, D, N, M, M, R, R, J, K, Q, E, and XX. And do I have, and I and all I need is a vote, because we have a second, so, to vote to move all of those, David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So, done. But now we still have a whole lot more on the agenda, my apologies. All right, so we are gonna move forward to the public space use request from.
Adam Chairman, seven B, if you'd like.
Oh, goodness, I apologize, I was all excited to be done with the first part. Yes. Seven B is regarding the planning for the special town meeting that we'll be voting these articles on.
Yeah, no, no, but David already brought up a very good point, is that we, we still don't have the plan set in place, so the date has not yet changed. Although the date could change if we find out logistically we need to, so it was a quite successful, and I'm gonna keep this brief, it was a quite successful special town meeting that we, you know, annual town meeting we executed on the parking lot, so I just to keep our options open, I reached back out to Lincoln Property Group, who's the management firm for Bill and May, and to see if that was available, but as I think someone already said earlier, they, in order to get a little more revenue, they are proposing a rider truck storage lot on, on, for a good portion, not the complete, maybe not even half, but a good, good portion of that, of that same parking lot, which is the South Pond, like off Sudbury Street. However, I asked about the upper lot, so there's, if, which is not even accessible, publicly accessible, I don't think right now, I mean, it's all private land, but. I mean, it's all private land, but I don't think they want anyone going up there, but they said that was available. So we'd have to look at, at what that size is compared to the other one, and it's a special town meeting, so maybe there'd be less turnout, but you don't know. And we'd have to make sure that the, that like the, you know how we're doing like the registration snake and whatnot, so we, there's a lot of work to be worked out, but, you know, um, we, we've already, we've already started scheduling those planning meetings with Dick Downey, the Town Moderator, Justin DeMarco, DPW Director, and anyways, we'll start working on those. But there's other backup plans. Originally, we were gonna do it all in the, in the middle school, like, just standard. We were gonna do it in the auditorium of the middle school, maybe that's still on the table, and then, or outdoors, outs, in, in front of the middle school. That's, that's an option on the table too. So we, we had already started working through the logistical plan of doing it in the middle school parking lot. So we have the, we have like the first draft of that plan. So now I'll keep the board informed, I'm just saying like, yes, these are still good questions, um, and there, there are options that need to be worked out.
Have you considered a virtual only? I know a few towns had theirs virtually only after we had ours.
I had not, because I didn't know if this, if the board would be, I don't want, I didn't, I, I didn't want to assume the board would be okay with that.
Is that?
Virtually only to not have it at all is the only way I'm kind of saying it, but.
Some towns did it before it was, they were allowed to do it, and so I'd have to check if, if the, if the governor changed, I'd have to check.
Okay.
I think, I think the representative government, I believe, could have Zoom one, so, so I think Arlington has a representative, uh, town meeting, they don't have a, a general town meeting.
Okay.
So, um, so that would be the question, is whether or not we can legally have a Zoom.
Yeah, that's a good point. But that's a good question. That's it, Madam Chairwoman, unless someone has a question for me.
Just one more, have we considered a format where we have multiple rooms, but the audio visual is hooked up so that, you know, people can physically?
Yeah, so when, so our, our primary plan back in even June was to hold it in the middle school, and we were gonna, because obviously, the social dispersion requires us to have much more space than we normally would, and so we were gonna use the, the auditorium, the gym, and the cafeteria, and then, and, but then we could still, I can't remember exactly how many people we could fit, but it wasn't gonna be. It was gonna be, it was not great, it's not great, but we were gonna hire an AV company, or even WABM to set it all up.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have anything for that before we move on? All right, uh, so let's move on to item, I have lost count, eight, no, nine? No, sorry.
No, we did that earlier.
Ten, ten.
I can't look at both at the same time. All right, um, so, move to approve the additional hours of Mondays, beginning August 17th, 2020, from noon to 1, uh, to 1:00 PM, through November 2020, for the use of the pre-approved portion of the central downtown parking area known as Naylor Court, by Open Table Food Pantry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Armand. Okay, so, Greg?
So I don't know if there's anyone from Open Table on the line, I don't think there is.
Doesn't look like.
Yeah, I, I personally don't see that as a concern, I don't think Fine Arts is gonna be opening up anytime soon.
Yeah.
So that's not gonna be a concern with parking from that standpoint anyway, at that time, the, they, you know, people don't park there for movies anyway.
Yeah.
My, actually, my one question is, is it weekly or is it monthly, do you know? Because I, I think in, in part of the memo, it says, "We have not set a date beyond August," but there was only one, I think there's only one date in August that they proposed, so are they doing one a month, or are they gonna do weekly?
No, I think it was weekly, that was my.
Yeah, it is weekly, I think.
But this, this motion doesn't say it's monthly, so we have to assume that it's.
Oh, it says once per month.
Oh, it does?
It does. Sorry, person of the memo. Um, yeah, so it's drive-through lunch once per month. Um, and so the, the question, so.
But they're not asking for the specific dates, though, so you're, you're approving, so your motion is to approve the use of a Mondays, of Mondays, starting August 17.
Right.
If they want it, which I think is not a bad thing, even if they only do it once a month, you're giving them flexibility that they can choose the Monday.
Right, so if it's gonna rain or, or whatnot, yeah. Anybody have a question, concern? Alrighty, uh, to approve this, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, so, thank you, everyone. Uh, all right, um, Caitlin, I think we are finally to you, or actually, I don't know if it's Caitlin, I know she's on for this. So we're gonna move to waive the board's exercise of its right of first refusal for the acquisition of Zero Parker Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent, thank you, uh, and Greg or Caitlin?
Okay, well, does it, so, I don't know if Caitlin is on, I'll just explain really quick, my, my part of it, and she can obviously give much more clarity and detail. So, um, we were, we were, the town was approached by a developer interested in Zero Parker Street, which is next to Maynard Crossing, and, now, a portion of, a good portion of that property is actually undevelopable, because it's, it's a, it's a butt in part, and it has part wetland. Um, but the town has first right of first refusal on, on that, so if the town were able to, um, match the offer price, this is my understanding, Caitlin can, can clarify, but, um, if the town were to match the offer price that the developer is proposing to buy that land, that, then the town can, has, can, and we can buy it, like, we can buy it before they do. Um, but if I recall, it's over a million dollars is the asking price, and the, the town does not, we don't have that.
Oh, we don't have the money?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Katie, you want to give clarity more?
Yeah, so, um, the property is currently in what is referred to as Chapter 161, which is a, um, tax program that allows someone to put a piece of, a piece of land or part of a, part of a parcel of land in, um, so that it is taxed only on its natural resource value as opposed to its developmental value. So of course, um, the value becomes a lot lower, so you pay less tax. But because you're in that program, if there's ever a change, a proposed change in the use of the property, or it ever goes to sale, um, the town has 120 days to match that bona fide offer, and in this case, as Greg mentioned, it's, um, 1.2 million, and, um, we discussed this at length at the Conscom, and we actually looked for different grants to see if there was anything available. Unfortunately, the timing is kind of off for all land acquisition grants, and even with those, I don't think, um, we would still, I don't think we'd hit the mark still, because I think that the cap on those is roughly $600,000 for community of our size. Um, and of course, the Conservation Commission does not currently have enough money in its land purchasing funds, but, um, understanding that a large portion of the property is undevelopable, uh, I reached out to, um, the developer and discussed potentially, or the, the potential of them donating part of that land back there to the town for, um, permanent, um, preservation, basically. And Justin, I think Justin's still here, he can, you know, discuss as well, because this property does abut the wells, it is in the Zone 2 of the, um, the Water Supply District, uh, Protection Zone. So that, we put some thought into that as well, and as much as we, you know, would like to purchase this entire property, um, we understand it's kind of not feasible at this time, and are very grateful that we still have the opportunity to potentially accept, um, the donation of that back, I think it's 6.9 acres.
Excellent.
A quick question, uh, did we look into potential CPC funds?
So the, I did speak to the chair, um, the chair is actually, of the CPC is actually on the Conscom, and he mentioned that, um, we couldn't really go forward with that, because currently, their borrowing power is tied up still with the golf course?
Yeah, as I, as I thought it through, because my initial impression was, geez, we could use CPC funds and then sell it to a, to a, a developer and make money off of it, and be able to control what goes there, versus selling it to a developer where we really don't have as much control. But then my, my memory went back to the fact that CPC would not allow us to sell it after that, so.
And, and any property, um, you know, acquired through right of first refusal is, is then protected under Article 97, meaning it has to stay in, um, um, conservation in perpetuity, unless there's a, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else have anything for Caitlin or Greg?
Um, I will also mention the planning board discussed this, um, and their take was that, you know, if we have the funds, we should, you know, use our right of first refusal, but, um, unfortunately, that is not the case.
Yes, after the lengthy discussion earlier, we. All right, um, so I will, I guess, uh, call for a vote to waive the board's exercise, waive the board's exercise of its right of first refusal. Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yep.
And I am a yes as well.
Did you say what, Chris?
I knew, I knew the question.
All right, thank you very much, Katie, I appreciate it.
You're very.
I'm sitting here panicking, I printed this, I printed the agenda out, because I can't use Google Two Screens, and it printed 21 pages, but there's only 10 really. Panic mode, I think we had 10 more pages to go.
I think we're further along than that, hopefully.
We're good, we're doing good.
All right, so the next item is going to be, uh, so we're gonna move to approve the amendment for fiscal year 2021, the contract with, uh, VHB to incorporate municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4, permit compliance support in the amount of $62,500, and authorize the use of digital signature. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thanks, Armand, and Greg, do you want to start this, or you want, uh, Justin?
Justin, if need be, but you did, you did a great job on the memo, I think it's, I think it's pretty, like, we, the board has been, um, briefed on our MS4, obligations, and, and our planning and whatnot, not only that, but it also ties into our Municipal Vulnerability Program, which is like our, sort of like our climate change, um, you know, like, how we're addressing that to a degree, but it's not direct, but it, but also with our, our, you know, we're trying to, you know, as we, we're talking about water infrastructure, but water infrastructure also includes MS4, because where's all that water go after it rains and whatnot? And, and, and so this is all part of that, so we have VHB, um, as we have had, um, we have a contract with them, but we need to adjust, we need to amend their contract to include this, this money that was already, um, appropriated for in FY21, this is just the contract for that. Justin, do you want to, I don't know if there's questions of the board, it's not, it's, again, Jeff, Jeff wasn't here as the board member, but the rest of the boards may, the rest of the board may recall, like, when VHB, and I'm forgetting the, the specific engineer's name, I can't remember her name, but, um, she briefed the board a number of times. Justin, do you, you want to add anything?
Yeah, her name's Lori Kennedy, she's actually no longer with VHB, so we lost, um, one of our project leads on that. But, um, realistically, this is a five-year permit, and this is year three, and each year, we have to, um, maintain minimum, um, action items and steps, and we've been on pace for just above minimum. So I, I caution the board, as we did with our presentation in the fall, that we need to stay the course, or in the end, we're gonna be paying a huge lump sum. This is another step in that five-year process, this is year three's requirements. Um, and if you kind of look at the memo, this actually ties into our NIPD's permit, which is our, um, permit that allows us to, um, treat wastewater and apply it to the Asbury River. Um, some of the MS4 situations, um, and infrastructures in the past, had sewer tie-ins to infrastructure drain, surface water drain systems, and this is to, uh, eliminate pollution through those systems into the natural environment. Um, this is important for many phases, because our NIPD's permit, um, based off of analysis and testing of the river, can, um, can actually be applied to drastic treatment changes in our wastewater, um, treatment processes. So eliminating a lot of our MS4 requirements helps with the NIPD's change, and, um, identifies that certain high levels of chemicals such as nitrogen could be tied to our MS4, and not to our wastewater treatment facility processes, which could potentially save money in the long term, um, from the EP and, and our NIPD's permit, when that is, um, run its course as well. So, um, this is good practice, we've been doing, uh, well for the past three years. Unfortunately, we're one of the communities with the infrastructure that falls into this permitting process, not all communities have to deal with this, but we are one. Um, and we're just looking to make sure that we, uh, keep pace.
Excellent, thanks, Justin. Uh, does anybody have any questions for either Justin or Greg regarding this contract, or the amendment? All right, well then we will move to approve, uh, Jeff? Uh, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right, um, so we will move on to item 14, and that is gonna be moved to, motion to approve the Launa Laborers Collective Bargaining Agreement, uh, effective July 1st of 2019, and remain in full force, and in fact, until July 30th of, I'm sorry, June 30th of 2022. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All right, uh, Greg?
Yep, so this is the follow-up, so this is the formalized, uh, approval of the Collecting Bargain Agreement, the union, uh, for the DPW laborers. Um, the, the board, due to executive session, considered the, the terms of the negotiations, and then, and then in open session, approved the MOA. This is the, then we incorporate the MOA into the actual collective bargaining agreement. So this is it, and it's already been approved by, um, by the union.
Excellent. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, for Greg regarding this?
I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Madam Chairwoman, I also want to, uh, point out that, um, we didn't have, we didn't have, uh, formalized, um, job descriptions for all the various roles, and so that was part of these negotiations. We, we want to do a better job, especially, and I'll give a lot of credit to HR Coordinator Stephanie Doggett, for like, trying to kind of modernize our HRs and, and have job descriptions, and so this is part of that strategy.
And so those are included in the contract, those were the, the individual other ones listed?
Yep, yep, they were approving.
Excellent. Uh, anyone else have any questions, concerns, comments? No, alrighty. Well, then move to approve, uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Chris? Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right, so that is good. Uh, next, we are gonna move into, um, item number 15, the financial conditions due to COVID. Uh, we're gonna talk about the, uh, draft financial policies that we've, they've been referenced a little bit tonight anyways, because they were given a preview yesterday at the Budget Subcommittee Meeting. But Greg, if you want to start us off?
So, so we've been working with the UMass Boston Collin Center for, uh, through a grant from, um, the Baker Polito's administration of the Community Compact Grant Program, and, um, it's for two projects, uh, a financial policies project and a forecasting. So we're kind of wrapping up with the financial policy, so I want to give, I want to give the status to the board, and the Finance Committee, and the Budget Subcommittee, and the School Committee, and, um, but the financial policies are more for in, in, internal procedures. Not to say that they aren't, that they aren't both informative and guidelines for, for the rest of, you know, all the public bodies and committees and whatnot, but it's not a bylaw, it's not, it's not a charter, so it's, so, and it's a guideline, right? So, again, there's so much uncertainties when it comes to year by year, you know, both revenue and fiscal demands, that you, sometimes you have to, you have to be flexible, but, but still, it's helpful to have financial policies, because as we discussed last night at the Budget Subcommittee Meeting, I'm not sure if there's been formalized financial policies for the town. Either way, it was a, it was a direction I was, I was given when I got here for two years, two years ago, and then we've been trying to pursue, but, you know, fortunately, taking advantage of this grant opportunity, we've been working with UMass Boston Collin Center. And so this is a draft, there's, I, you know, it's 31 pages, so it's not short, but, um, you know, it's, it'd be really helpful. And if by year by year, if we have to amend this draft, so be it, but I wanted to just give it to the board, have you look at it. A lot of it is like, the stuff that you wouldn't see, it's all internal, but some of it is, is like, like we said, the allocation of free cash and whatnot, and that's, that's important. It's aspirational, I also want to point out that's aspirational, just as Jeff already pointed out, like, getting 10% of, uh, of a general stabilization fund, uh, 10%, ugh, get your general stabilization fund up to 10% of your general fund is no small undertaking, so, um, but you, you kind of work up to it. get your general stabilization fund up to 10% of your general fund is no small undertaking. So, but you, you kind of work up to it. But we never had that like magic number listed before. Now we do.
So we didn't have a goal before. So the fact that we have a goal to strive for is something to keep in mind as we continue to move forward.
That's correct. And it also formalizes the, the budget procedure to a degree. And I think with that might have to be adjusted about like the timeline and when things are submitted and whatnot. But it's a good, it's good to have something in place instead of every year kind of like doing it differently.
Now, Greg, are you taking edits of it? Or how, how is it, you know, obviously 31-page document has?
No, I will. So I'm not expecting anything tonight. So I'm, I'm asking that, that, and there's no, there's, so we have the product to this degree. Yes, the grant is going to run out soon, but we, but our, our consultants already moved into the, the fiscal projection. Oh my gosh. Or forecasting. Has moved into the forecasting project. So we're kind of wrapping up. So what I'm, for the financial policies, we're wrapping up. So yes, if you, if you get a chance, you look over, you have questions, shoot me an email. We'll, we'll either incorporate revisions or explain how we got there, whatever the case may be. So yeah, it's for like public consumption.
Are we going to have a further discussion before we adopt this or before the town adopts it or anything?
So you, you can absolutely, but it's, I'm not, it's, by adopting it, you're more accepting it like a correspondence. Like I'm providing it to the board, not because it's going to be set as a board policies. It's more like an internal policies, frankly. And it, and it helps me provide, because I, I abide by the town charter and the bylaws that says I have to give you a balanced budget. Capital planning.
It's almost like a guide for you.
That's right. And us, and us.
And us.
Yeah.
The one concern I have is just that, that there is a lot in it that does buy a lot of different things. And
Yeah.
And my, my first concern is, is actually what Jeff keeps rightfully so bringing up tonight, which is, you know, if, if we start to do something, he's like, well, there's, there's a, we're going to have this policy in place. And, and so it almost feels like, as much as it is a goal, I want to make sure it's expressed that it's a goal as opposed to handcuffing the town into having to do certain things when you might have to make that hard decision and go against it. You know, and, and yeah, so that was, that was one of my first concerns. The other concern I have is that we do also obviously have policies in the charter and the, you know, in the bylaws. And I, I want to make sure that, you know, those obviously are, tho- those are what we go by. We, we do have a charter review coming up, you know, in the next year. But those are, those really should form what we're doing for the town. I don't necessarily know if, if this should form that. And so my concern is that this policy will then form the charter. And I want to make sure that that's not going to happen.
It goes the other way. Right. So it goes charter, so it goes master general law, charter, bylaws, and then internal policies.
Okay. All right.
Well, rules and regulations and then policies. Sorry. There's a lot. Very, very layered. Yeah.
There's a lot of red tape there. Anyone have any, any discussion for tonight and want to just digest it for a little bit or?
I'll digest it a little further.
I have some comments, but I'll send those along, Greg, separately. Clarifications. But I, I think overall they look really good. I think they're very important for us to have and to present to the public, or even if, with the understanding that they're aspirational goals.
Yep.
So, and, you know, but it's also a signal to communicate out to the, you know, all the, all the relevant committees that, that, and, and the departments as well, just for everybody to, to be on the same page about, you know, how, how the money is being around. I think that's very important.
Yeah.
I agree, Greg.
I agree.
This is a great start. And I think it's somewhat overdue that we had some type of guidance for the town hall staff, which to follow, to sort of give a, give a roadmap per se as to where things are going. And as Greg has said numerous times, it's not a steadfast rule. It's just some guides to help us to have an understanding of what we have to do to, to improve and to make sure we're striving to meet a goal. So I say good work, Greg.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then Mark, I would like to see this for formal acceptance by some vote of the board when they're in a final format.
And we should also thank Bob McCarthy. I mean, he's been, he spends some time on this.
He's not getting paid for it.
Exactly. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like someone else is getting paid.
Yeah.
All right. So then, not hearing anything else. We'll move on to the town administrator report.
Hey.
Yeah, it was good exciting this month.
Come on. So it's not that excited. I, I have to admit. So, but I please, I encourage the public to please read the town administrative report. Because it is, yes, it's for the selectmen directly, but it is for everyone's awareness as well. I do want to point out one, two things. So the, so the apartments that are proposed on Powdermill Road, which I, I'm trying to remember what they're called now for the Acton, sort of Acton version of it. Apartments at Powdermill, I think they're called.
Yeah, that's what it's called. Apartments at Powdermill. Yeah.
Yep. But everyone maybe called it as Powdermill Place when it was, when it was like the earlier version. So the, the board correctly so directed town staff to inform the planning staff and, and then potentially, you know, to, to advise the planning board and act and so on and boarding of repeals and act and board of selectmen and act and whoever to be like, provide us, provide them our, our sort of like input when it comes to their considerations of the project. So we did that. So I reached out to John Mandriati, the town manager, to say like, hey, heads up, my planning team is going to contact your planning team. My DPW director is going to contact your DPW director. And, and we kind of, it was, it was relatively straightforward because we'd already done a significant amount of work when we come to considering Powdermill Place. But we updated some of it. So we used VHB, our town engineer firm, to update some of it, send it over to, and so really, because the impact is on the, is on the site, right? So even though it's, it's going to be only on the Acton portion, you know, like whether it be sidewalks, driveways, landscaping, traffic mitigation, like those are going to obviously impact both towns. So we sent off our concerns and, and they were received, but I can't, I don't know how well they were received by the, by the various appointed and elected bodies of Acton. I, I don't know. But, so we, we sent it to them. And so Justin, Justin's memo here is sort of like a report on, on what we sent them. And then, so that's one thing. And then the, the other item, which is also related, Justin has an involvement in, is that we're, we just, on last Friday was the deadline for proposals, for our request for proposals for the solar array projects that we're trying to do on, on, on the school, school property, primarily school property, but like put up, I'm not very technical when it comes to stuff, but basically put up solar panels over it, whether it be parking lots or field or something like that. And so we got the proposals on Friday. So we're going to be, we're going to be processing those proposals, but now we have to evaluate those proposals. So I, I have a, I have a recommendation for an evaluation team to include myself, Justin, one board of selectmen member, one school committee member, and someone from the superintendent's office. And so I, and I, I provided my recommendations to Superintendent, Superintendent Brian Haas, who said he'll, he'll contact the school committee and ask them to volunteer too. So I'm asking this evening, and I don't know when the, I don't know when we're going to get together and start doing these evaluations. But, and does, do I have any volunteers on the board that'd be willing to sit on this evaluation team?
I would certainly, I would certainly be willing to do it. It's just if it's scheduling is the issue, right? You know, given the, where, where everybody is, because that's something I'm interested in. But again, it's all scheduling.
How about I have a backup? So David's my primary. Do I have a, do I have an alternate? That's a yes, Chris. I saw it. That's a.
Yay, Chris.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Too bad.
He's got the solar power.
All right. Thank you so much.
Just a comment, Greg. I, I saw you had five, five people apply for, what was it, one or two spots on the conservation commission?
Oh, did we? I don't know. I didn't follow that far.
I hope we're plugging those people into the other open spots we have in the various boards, housing, planning, production.
No conservation commissions, so. It'll be it.
You have an overflow.
Don't, don't let them go.
No, no, I agree. And so you're, to your point, exactly. We, we need some bodies. We need some bodies.
Excellent. Actually, that's, I mean, that works if we have anything open on planning or anything like that. Caitlin does both. So, you know, hopefully she can redirect. All right. So moving on to item 17, which is our, considering our goal setting meeting or workshop or whatnot. So Greg, you had a date that we figured out. I forget. Is September 17?
Forgetting the date too. September 17th sounds right.
Okay. It's a Saturday.
Seventeenth. So it's maybe it's the 19th.
Okay. So yeah, so I think it.
It has to be 19 because that's a Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think Jeff, you had said that you were, you could be available on the 12th if you had to be, but I, we figured that if it's, if, you know, one week's not going to make a difference.
You let me know now, I can block it off.
Yeah.
What week are you saying?
September 19.
It's Russian Shana. For what it's worth.
Okay.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't. Personally, it doesn't affect me, but I don't know that we can, you know, we typically try and not hold meetings on our religious holidays.
That is correct. That is true.
I'm fine with the 12th if that's what needs to be done.
The 12th. So do you want to do the 12th then?
I'm okay with the 12th.
Are you okay with the 12th?
Yeah.
So, and so the one thing like I, I think I, I alluded to this before. Actually, I'm not sure. But, you know, I do definitely think it works better having kind of an off-site type of thing. So I understand everybody has different comfort levels. I understand that we need to practice social distancing. So I think we're trying to figure out a location that could be amenable to that, whether it is outside, inside. What time are people staying here? Are we thinking 10? Greg, do you have any, did you have any ideas?
I don't know. I really don't know. I mean, like if we do 10 and it gets long, I mean, then we're going to lunch. I mean, I, I really don't. I, I mean, I, I think doing it during the day is better than nighttime because we, you know, but no, I don't have.
On a Saturday? Absolutely. I don't want to go on a Saturday night. Something to think about out of the box type of deal. If, if we need a spot, maybe the Elks would have, would allow us to use their upstairs. Maybe the Rod and Gun Club would allow us to use their, you know. There's plenty of room on the inside. If you have inside, even if people show up, which nobody will, you'd be able to spread them out.
Amory's Tomb? No, just. I, I.
Then we can go to Saturday night.
Yeah. So I, and that's, that's not, I mean, I, because I know the Rod and Gun, but I don't know if it's, I know that we allowed them to open, but I don't know if they're renting right now for their outdoor pavilion, which is a pretty big space as well.
True. I thought that's, I thought they were using the outdoor pavilion already.
I know they're using it for, yeah. So I'm, I'm not sure. Again, just an idea.
As long as people with their, with their rifles don't turn around, you know.
Yeah. So anybody else have any, I mean, we could, we, the only other thing I think of is, is honestly the school. The inside, inside the Fowler where we vote, if there's seven of us inside that in the auditorium.
Well, we have to, we have to plan for
Right.
X amount of people, although as we know, it doesn't, doesn't get a lot of turnout, but, but we can, but we can, yeah, we, like, we should plan for more than just the seven of us. That's all I'm saying. Yeah.
So I guess the question for, that I have for the board is, are you comfortable exploring a larger indoor setting? Or are you only comfortable outside? And I'm completely, I'm looking for your opinions here.
I have a strong preference for outside. It's, it's not only, it's both the safety factor and the setting, the example that we want. I know seven people socially distanced in a very large room meets the guidelines, but it's, it's still just, it's the look and the, you know, the actual final process. The outdoor pavilion sounds almost perfect, but.
Excellent. Okay.
You know, Amory's Tomb does have the outdoor beer.
There you go. Beer, there'd be a garden.
Ten to noon.
Three best friends can fit in it.
Yeah.
All right. So Greg, maybe we can explore offline, try to figure out an outside venue that would work for us on Saturday, the 12th. What do we say? Nine or 10? What do people prefer?
Nine.
Nine? Nine? Okay. 9:00 AM on the 12th?
Yeah, very good.
Okay.
We could even sit, sit on the deck at the, you know, golf course.
I was thinking of that too, but I wasn't sure if we could.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's enough room out there, right, Chris?
The only place they have for their customers to go on Saturdays.
That's true.
Sorry.
It's true. We'd be hurting ourselves by cutting off there.
Yeah, yeah.
There are some, there are some people that show up there on Saturdays at 10 o'clock sharp.
Would there be a rain date?
There would have to be a rain date. We'll have to explore that further because I think the 12th and the 19th were the only ones that all five of us could make it. So that might push it into October, which is the town meeting. So.
You do the rain date for the Sunday?
Oh, that's fair. But it, but it's a.
Then it's a, it's a church day. But I don't know if that, yeah, so it's not ideal.
Sunday afternoon. We could do Sunday afternoon if we had to.
Yeah, I'm favorable Sunday afternoon.
Sunday afternoon is okay.
Yeah.
Sunday at 1?
Okay, cool.
Rain date?
That's opening day for football, Chris.
If you think it's going to happen.
I could kill us about the NFL.
I'm with you.
So that works. So that means that what we can do is, I mean, yeah. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, we got time.
Excellent. All right. So anything else? Oh, no, we're done with that. Yay. Share report. So making up for last time. Only kidding. I sent an email out to the board members about the housing production plan that is up for review. And Bill Nemser is heading up the, the, the committee and is looking for a member of the board of selectmen to join. Armand had emailed and said that he was interested. I don't know if anybody else is interested as well, or if we're okay with Armand taking part of it, or Armand, if you've changed your mind. Just making sure. Does anybody else have any comments on that at all? Concerned? No. All right. So Armand, congratulations.
Thanks.
All right. Um, so the only other thing that I'm going to have, I had a few other things, but, but I had, I just have one kind of statement thing. And part of it is in regards to Selectman Gavin's request last week, or the last meeting. The town administrator and I have been working with the town's PR firm to try to craft some kind of statement that would craft, that would capture what we think the board of selectmen want to convey to the community regarding various opinions, signage, et cetera, in town and how to have them expressed respectfully. I'm hoping we'll have a statement to, for the rest of the board to review for the next meeting. Now that there's a meeting on Tuesday, it might be the following meeting, but, but we are working on that. We, you know, I definitely took that to heart. In the meantime, I personally would like to say that we're in a very nerve-wracking time in terms of the political landscape, social justice issues and the still relative unknown of living through a pandemic. And I ask that everybody keep in mind that we are all neighbors and part of a community. What is said online through social media, in person, and through signs can hurt and further tear us apart. May it as best when we pull together, acknowledge and respect our differences and support each other. And I ask for everyone to treat their neighbors with respect and understanding as they would also wish to receive themselves. And we will all get through this. And I think we're all in it for the long haul. So I appreciate what everyone's doing and, and everyone hanging there. So that's all I have.
Was that a release? So that was in relation to signs?
That was in relation, that was, part of it was in relation to signs. The other statement was more about just everything in general. I think that everyone's tensions are a little high and you just need to all remember that we're, we're all in this together.
I don't want to steal your, are you done?
I am done. Go ahead, Chris. Go ahead. You're next.
Said, because I've had a couple of people ask me questions. And the question is, town owns signs, town owns land, you know, things owned by the town, town property. Are people allowed to hang signs or put signs on town property of any kind?
Not without approval of the, of the owners. That's you.
Yeah, because I, I've been asked by a few people about signs in different parts of town and different places and some complaints about people who put signs on town property and, I don't know, most of them disappear within a day or two anyway, but just asked the question. So now I know. just asked the question, so now I know the answer to the question.
My, my understanding just need about that from our last conversation was that approving or putting out a statement as the board almost recognizes some of the events that were happening, um, in a way that we don't necessarily want to draw extra attention to.
And, and I, absolutely, I respect that. Um, that was my concern as well. The one concern I have is that moving forward, um, that we do have election coming up, um, and, and I'm not necessarily sure. I, I just think that the board, well, personally, again, I'm one member, but, uh, I think it might be helpful for the board to express what they feel would be members being good community members to each other, keeping all of that in mind, you know, with this season coming upon us. So it's kind of like an acknowledgement, but not an acknowledgement of hoping that we can all be good neighbors and move forward.
And I think you just expressed that sentiment beautifully. My, and, yeah, that's, that's my argument is that, you know, one of the reasons this behavior exists is people trying to get attention, and by doing this, we're giving it in some way, attention. So I just want to be very careful that we're not, you know, granting attention to something that is not deserving of it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jeff, but at the same time, but your statement, uh, Justine, was pretty good. I mean, I, I think that, to me, could be, you, you, you could capsulize that and maybe make it a statement on our part. That was a good statement. I mean, you, you didn't say anything specific, you didn't, you know, um, refer to anything in specific, you just made a statement. And I, and I, that's just my point, I think that was a good statement, from my, from my standpoint.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Uh, Chris, are you done with your, you had your question about the signs, do you have anything else for the, for your report?
Oh, I could do that. Um, I, I only have one question, it came out of a, um, something that we talked about earlier tonight, and I was thinking about it when the conversation was over a little bit. Bars and restaurants, you know, with outside seating and whatnot, they have, um, particular hours, and it seems as though even Flo was a little confused as to what the hours were supposed to be, what they were. Kind of Becky told him, no, your regular hours didn't change. I think we should, I think we should, um, inform all of our restaurants that are still open that their indoor seating hours, according to what Becky said, have not changed, only their outdoor. Because it seems as though, like, you know, I don't, Gigi's closed off early, you know, all these, I think everyone's closing that's open at their outdoor seating hours while they still are allowed some indoor seating as long as it's distanced properly. So I think we should get that out to the, the restaurant folks that, hey, we didn't tell you you couldn't run your restaurant indoors at certain hours, only outdoors, because I think some of them are missing out on that opportunity. And that was, that was all I had.
Good, that's good.
Yeah, good idea. Um, Armin, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. First, um, I have a, um, a comment to make in regards to the, um, administrator's report. Greg, I think, uh, I appreciate the fact that you guys went on site for the John Deere Powder Mill equipment, and I think that's an exciting opportunity. I am so pumped up about what, the potential, what's going to happen there. I, I, I think the VOS came to the EDC meeting and spoke to us about, and got some feedback from the committee about, you know, what, what should go there as a development. Um, obviously they don't want this closed yet, they don't want to make it public yet, but, uh, there, there's some great opportunities there, and I think it's going to be a focal point for that Powder Mill, uh, you know, corridor, that, that happens. So it's exciting, and I'm glad that, um, you know, I see everybody there involved and pictures look great. The second piece, and I brought this to, uh, Justine's attention, and Jeff and I spoke about it for quite some time about the master plan. It's important and it's crucial that we kind of, we, we kind of make, we make sure that this plan does not sit on a shelf and collect dust. And I think that we need to make sure that, uh, whether you want to call it the what's next committee, you want to call the implementation, you know, team, that we get, we get to put this in place, uh, we'll get this thing going. And I know that, um, uh, we need to get someone that's going to head that committee up. And I know Greg, you, you're looking into, you know, putting that in place, but it's so crucial and something that we should talk about maybe at the goal setting meeting, I don't know. But, um, I, I see that as our roadmap to the future of the town. There's some, so many nice, so great things in there, and I was telling this to David. If you look at some of those surveys, uh, just from the surveys alone, you could get some feedback about what people are thinking. So anyway, but that's, that's just, uh, my two cents.
Excellent, thank you, Armin. Uh, David?
Thank you. Um, Greg, quick question. Um, at annual town meeting, typically, there is the annual town report. I know Chris wrote our little, uh, essay for this year and everything else. Are those available for public view somewhere? You know, typically the books are handed out, but this year with, with what we've had, I don't even know if we produced a book.
Yeah, we did.
And if they are, where can residents pick them up?
So, um, Megan is my publisher, but I'll, I'll, no, she can explain, but it is online right now. Megan, go ahead and explain.
Yeah, this is Megan's Muto, Assistant Town Administrator. We did print books this year. Um, it is online on the Town Report page on our website. We have physical copies available. Um, if anyone's interested, you know, I can do a posting on the website to let people know that if they're interested, they can contact me and I can facilitate a contactless delivery or, um, you know, mail it to them. We, we didn't order a great deal. Um, you know, interest hasn't been very high, and with budgets being cut, we did kind of order the minimum, um, to allow for record keeping, the library, uh, you know, the departments that need one. But we do have, you know, a surplus for, for residents that would like a, uh, physical book. And Armin had a couple of pictures in there, I don't know if you looked at it, Armin.
May, may I ask, uh, that a copy be either sent to me or brought to me somehow? I just keep them as a, you know, historic record, so I have them.
Everyone in the board, no problem.
It's like not having your, uh, your, your newspaper for the, you know, for one day out of the year, you know, so. So anyway, that's all, that's all I've got, thank you. And I, I really, I was sincere earlier, when I spoke about the quality of our conversation this evening relative to some very difficult situations and, and, and issues. I think the public who are watching on Facebook or wherever the hell they're watching on this thing and, uh, and on Facebook appreciate seeing, um, you know, uh, conversation of that, of that tenor and of that quality when we're talking about things of, of importance to them. So, um, I appreciated it and I, I hope as time goes on that we can have even more of those conversations, because times are not going to get any easier. And Justine, thank you for the, um, the comments that you made about the issues that we're facing as a society, because I'm, I am very concerned about that too. I mean, I mean, you know, I don't, I, I don't know why we can't, get along. My politics has become such polar, such a polarized thing. I mean, I, I do understand, but I don't understand. And it's, it's, you know, I have a lot of friends who don't think the same way that I do politically, and we still have a laugh and we still have a beer, but there are people unfortunately among us that if you don't think the same way on every single issue that they do, that you're somehow, uh, you know, not to be their friend. And, and that's not the society I want to live in, and I don't think it's the town that we live in, so, um, thanks for those comments earlier.
Jeff?
I wanted to commend the, uh, Affordable Housing Trust in setting up the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. I think that's a, a very big deal and much needed, and I'm very glad that we have that in place of that, that, um, kudos to everybody who worked to get that done. Uh, I also wanted to congratulate the Friends of the Maynard Library for having their annual concert last week. I think they had, it was nineteen hundred viewers, um, from various places. I think they shared that, uh, with the library network, uh, and the artist himself. So they did a fantastic job. And then, uh, I wanted to congratulate Ericsson's Ice Cream who topped the best boston.com poll.
Yes.
Uh, so, uh, great job with, I believe, the green monster being the favorite flavor, uh, of the people who voted for them.
Monster.
To share, monster, I'm sorry. And, uh, it's the only way many of us have seen the green monster this year. Um, and then just to share the love of ice cream, I want to congratulate Theodore Creamery, because they're going to be having a ribbon cutting, uh, ceremony, uh, this. Having had both Ericsson's and Theodore Creamery, I'm giving two thumbs up to those guys for, for what they're doing. So that's all I have.
Excellent. Yes, excellent. Yeah, we all love the ice cream, right? Alright, so I will make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
I said, if no one seconds, we can't go. Alright, well, you guys are already at home, but anyways. People in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Alright, and I am a yes, so good night all, thank you.
Great meeting, good night.